It was Troy, myself, and it was, yeah, that's right. That's right. Sorry.
Broncos and a pocket lot. So, all right, ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna start. Good evening, everyone, and welcome back to the zoning board backfield for town Wareham. Today's, it's Wednesday, September 14, 2022. It is 6:30 PM and we are at room 320 at the multi-service center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham. We also have people on Zoom. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. I make a roll call. My far left associate member, Mr. Troy Larson, Oregon member, Mr. Rick Sample, myself, the chair, Nazir Al-Khlasia, our clerk, to the right, Mr. Jim Akabachi. And Mrs. Devonese would be, she's in a parking lot. She's coming up any minute. I have to quick some randomly business to do quick on the minutes. Minutes for 5:27, 2020, and 8:24, 2022.
If you want to do them together, I can make a motion for both of them. I reviewed both sets of minutes. They're both correct as presented. I move to accept them both.
What do you guys think?
I second it.
Discussions, any discussion? None? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstain, 4-0-0. Continue public hearing. Okay, for the record, Veronica, Mrs. Veronica, the beneath is here and it is 6:32 PM. 23-22, John F. Keating, special permit and a variance for 18 Highland Road. Come forward, please.
Three packets.
All right, I'm an address counselor for the racket.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Dennis Connery, appearing in behalf of John Keating. My address is 245 Main Street, Wareham.
Okay, so what, what did we leave at last time? I went by. I'm sure other board members went by. Do you have new evidence on the hardship since last time?
Well, yes, I do, Mr. Chairman. The, I had a, the opportunity to draft a brief memorandum that I filed with the, with Sonia on Monday. I don't know whether any of the board members had a chance to, to review it. And
I did. I did quick today myself. I don't know about the board members. What, where do you see the hardship in there? I, I didn't
I, the hardship issue is, quite frankly, most of the time that we, we present variance petitions and applications.
Yeah.
The hardest, the hardest issue is to, is to, is to get by the first condition, which is owing to circumstances specifically affecting this property and this building. But during the last hearing, Mr. Chairman, you indicated that you thought that the petition established the first condition, which is that, I think you referred to it as uniqueness. So the stumbling block after that was the chairman questioned whether or not there was hardship. So as a result of, of your comments, I did some research on the question as to what constitutes hardship. And there's no definition in the zoning bylaw. There's no definition in the statute 40A. So it appears, it appears to me that the prevailing description, it seems to be of hardship, which is, one description would be as it relates to real property, an inability to use one's property in a reasonable manner. Now that's now separate and if you don't have number one, you, you don't get to, you don't get to the second condition, which is hardship. And, and I also then took the opportunity to review this board's decisions over the last couple of years on what you required for variances. And I, I, I came across the, the sport's decision in 45 Longwood Avenue in Onset, which was a 2021 decision. And in, in that case, there was a small cottage on a 3,700 square foot lot that somebody wanted to buy and expand after they bought it. Before they, before they bought it, they came to the sport and got asked for permission to essentially triple the size of that dwelling, which is, it went from a 600 square foot, one-story cottage with an addition of about 1,300 square feet. So, and, and it had a number of, of issues. But I only will focus on, on the hardship issue. And, and this is what the decision stated. The existing building is small and there is a financial hardship if an addition is not allowed in order to have a year-round home. So it, another case that this board decided, in, in that case, the board found that there was a hardship because, because it was a small house and the owner or the, or the intended owner wanted to triple the size of the lot, a tiny little lot, 3,700 square feet. So then I also, then I looked at a couple of other cases that this board decided. I'm trying to get a, an understanding of what this board thinks is reasonable for hardship. And I looked at 52 Naniumet Street. And that's a 5,000 square foot lot. And the owner of that property wanted to demolish a small structure and replace it with a garage, 24 by 28, 672 square feet. That, once again, that's on a, on a modest-sized lot. So in, in our case, we're not asking to build anything. This is not a request to enlarge an existing law, the structure. This is, this is a substantial structure, however. It's, it's been there for 60 or 70 years. It's got a concrete foundation and concrete floor. It's, it's got a, it's got a pretty new roof on it. And it's 800 square feet. So it's, it's not like most garages in town. So it's sitting in the backyard. It also is, is connected to town sewer. It has plumbing in it. It has a bathroom and with a, with a sink, a toilet and a bathtub. And the last, in my last, last time we had, we had a hearing on this, we, we described to the board how that, how that plumbing got into the house and it wasn't put in by the homeowner without a permit. He had a permit. He got it from the, from the, the building inspector in 2002. At, at which time, 400 square feet of the building was used for a, for a recreation room that had, that had plumbing and it had electricity. It's got heat. So it's a substantial structure. Well, it's sitting in the back yard now and it's, it's, it's just collecting stuff like sometime people collect stuff in garages and it winds up that they can't get in the garage. But in any event, he wants to put it to a good use without changing the appearance of the building at all on the outside. I mean, the size of it. Yes, he is gonna, he's not, he's not asking to take, take down trees. He's not asking to raise it up in the air so that the neighbors will hardly notice it is there. And I don't know. I noticed we got a full house tonight. The last time we, we had nobody here. I, I hope everybody in the room isn't here to oppose my hearing, but, or my, my petition, but you never know. And the last time my, my client checked, it was not objected to by anybody in the neighborhood. So my experience is that boards of appeals, they look at the whole picture. You know, is this, is this gonna be detrimental to the neighborhood? Is, is, is the most practical thing? And I, I submit that it is not. It's gonna be, it, it's gonna improve this property because he's gonna, he, he's looking to either have family live in it. He's got a couple of adult children, but that's, that's not a reason that would, that would support a hardship. But the, if, and if this structure wasn't already on the property, I'd say that we had, we would have no viable argument that we should be able to build this in the backyard. It's an existing structure. And interestingly, I came across a case. And if I can put my hands on it. And it, it happened the same year I came to Wareham, 1972. And it's Johnson versus the Board of Appeals. And it was an interesting case.
What town?
Excuse me?
For the appeal for what?
Wareham. And, and it was about the property just over the Narrows Bridge on Sandwich Road. It has been, it's, it's across somewhere New England Refrigeration used to be a long time ago. And now there's a barber shop there. Well, that property across the street, at the time I moved to town, was owned, owned by by the congregation, by the congregational church. And, and there was a, they wanted to, and it was in a, it was in a residential zoning district. The church wasn't much of a church, but it, it, it was a unique structure. And the, the applicant wanted to turn it into office spaces. And this is in a residential district. So that was, and that required a variance. And, and I'd be happy to, happy to share, share the case with, with the board. I've got, I've got a couple, two or three copies.
That's a bit different than
Copies of it.
That's a bit different than this matter.
Well, I, and I, I think, you know, on, on a question of hardship, I guess, in, in that case, the
Let me, if I may, let me go back to these two cases you mentioned in Onset. These cases, they come in before us, before us as a variance. Unless the board sees otherwise, under 1352, we'll act upon it as a special permit. If we, if it's deemed not detrimental to the neighborhood because most of these buildings are existing non-conforming. And our bylaw allows an extension of the non-conformity. So if you're set, if you're, if you're setbacks 10 feet and the house is at eight feet, our town allowed our bylaws, we can grant a special permit if the board feels it's not so detrimental and act upon it as a special permit versus a variance and extend that non-conformity. That being said, every case is different. Going back to, you saying the variance doesn't exist in our bylaw. The variance bylaws are stately constituted, constituted on national laws 40A and it's section 10. And it's very, very clear on that section. If you want me to read it for you quick?
I've attached it to, to, to my, to my memorandum.
Right.
The, the statute 40A, section
Right. And then the very important part that says a literal, a literal enforcement of the provision of the ordinance or bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial otherwise to be the, for the petitioner or appellant. And that desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public neighborhood, nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent of the purpose of such ordinance. However, such permit granting authority from the authority has to find the owing to circumstances related to soil condition, shape, topography, or such land or, or structure. It's, and especially affecting, affecting such land or structure. So you're, that, that doesn't, none of this applies to your case. You're just creating another dwelling.
Well, you're talking about a use. We're not creating, we're not building a building.
You're not creating building, but you are asking to create, to create another dwelling and a garage. This is, there's no hardship to it.
You look at the totality of the circumstances. This isn't a, a, a 250 square foot garage. This is, this is a large structure, four times that size, that has plumbing and, and, and sewer to it. And I submit that that is a, a, a structure that's unique to this property. It's not, it, it, it doesn't affect it like if you, if you granted this, this, this variance that
I'm with you. It's unique, but you don't have a hardship.
We're not, well, well, in the
You have to fit the four conditions of the section 10. You don't have, you don't meet all four conditions.
So it's, well, the, the hardship condition that you're concerned with, that, that, that I haven't convinced you of yet. In the, in the, in the Johnson, the Board of Appeals of the Town of Wareham, there's a statement that says, "Not being able to reasonably use an unusual and substantial building is a hardship justifying the issuance of a variance." That's so that the appeals court and the, and the SJC in turn
1972 case, right?
Right.
Right. That was a case saying it's not justifiable using a church in that location or whatever the case was to make a house or make, make a residential. I don't, they wanted to do it otherwise.
From a church to an office.
Right, from a church to an office.
Instead of from a church to a house.
Or church to an office, but that's in 72. The court find that it's an assembly to an office. I wasn't there, so I don't know. But that's a big difference. You are, you are creating another dwelling. There's no hardship to create that dwelling.
Well, the key is, that's an existing structure that
I totally understand.
And, and under, under, under Johnson, it says, "If you're unable to use in a, a unusual and substantial building is a hardship." So they're, they're not agreeing with you in this case.
But you, you can use it as a garage and a little shop when you walk in a garage to watch the
Why do you say that this garage is not an unusual and substantial building? Town of Wareham.
So how does that make a substantial if you, if you make a dwelling versus a garage?
Well, this was, this was, this was a church that they turned into a, Johnson, they, they took a church and it wasn't an august structure. I think it was a very modest, modest building that, but, you know, we, in order to interpret the language in statutes, which is often difficult to interpret, we, we lean on the case law. And I submit that the language in this, and every, and I agree with you, every, every one of these cases is different, you know, so you stand, you know, what, 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 what most boards that take, try to do is look at, look at this maybe, instead of piece by piece, they look at it as, as, as together. Is this good for, is this good for the, the neighborhood? Is this, is, is this good for the town? I don't see how this, it, 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 it's, it's good. It accomplishes in a modest way, the goals of the town right now, which is to provide modest housing downtown, close, close to the village. It's not gonna have any sprawl. I mean, what, what's the alternative? Is it, this, this building gets knocked down and, and taken to the, to the dump? This is, this is the ultimate recycling. You know, what's this? We're asking to repurpose this. Haven't we always gone, repurposed buildings? You know, it's the turn of the last century. There were carriage houses out there. What did, people no longer had horses. So they, so they turned it into carriage house apartments. I mean, is, is, this isn't an outrageous, this isn't over the top what, what this request is. We're just trying to repurpose this or recycle, the ultimate recycling to turn a building that's not being used to its fullest capacity in a very modest way, turn it into a dwelling house.
But you are using the lot above your capacity, 200% above, because your law, your law only allows two units. You already have three.
Well, if we, if we had enough, you know, the density issue, this board
Would then need 21,000 square feet to have four units.
Exactly. That's, well, if we, if we had that, we wouldn't be taking up your time tonight.
Right, that's true.
So, so that, but that's how
Still need a special permit, not a variance. However, but you don't even have, you're not even close. If you were all by 50 feet, I understand. But before I make all my comments, let me, let me, if you don't mind, let, let me start by Veronica. Ms. Devonese, do you have a comment on that? And did you have a chance to go look at it?
I do. I did look at it. I drove through the neighborhood and looking at the properties that were around it and seeing the number of cars that were parked at the property, I felt that another unit would really cause some congestion there. But the, the other thing that I just am thinking about as I'm reading the letter here regarding the garage and, and that it's unique because it has a bathroom and a tub is that the reason for the bathroom and the tub is because he was denied the fourth unit that he had applied for in the past. So instead of getting the fourth unit, he put in a bathroom and a tub at his choice, that it was a garage. And the stance that this is unique, it's not, it's the same situation, except now there was a bathroom and tub added because he wasn't allowed then. Almost like you're saying, because it's a bathroom and a tub, it should be allowed to be a residential unit. The only reason the bathroom and tub are there is because I think someone was trying to work with him to get that to be what he kind of wanted it to be at the time. I do agree that Wareham obviously needs the housing, but I, I feel like that property is, has its maximum use as it is. And unfortunately, I don't agree.
Jimmy?
No questions at this time.
Troy?
I don't have any questions at this time.
Rich?
So I went by it and I'm, I'm kind of, we know that WV2 is a place where we're supposed to be housing and promoting that. Secondly, it's a garage that's on the property. It needs to something to do with it. If the gentleman wants to go through this, go come here and sit and try to get this apartment put in there, I, I kind of have to say that there was no objections. And also, I, I kind of feel like if a couple more cars in one place, the next house down the road, if they want to do something, they're gonna put more, the limit of the cars, I thought at one point, I said, you know, maybe it is too crowded. But, you know, I, I'm kind of, I'm kind of for it. I, I, I am for it. I don't think that all the reasons that were given this gentleman not to give him the permit, I think there's, at the same token, there is reasons to give him the variance. So that's my thoughts on it.
Thank you. Anyone in the public want to speak in favor? Anyone on the, want to speak in favor or against? Okay, I hear none.
Can I respond?
Of course.
One question, Veronica ahead. The, the site plan provides for parking onsite for, for this unit. There's, there's plenty of, there's plenty of room to put a parking space off-street. This is a, this is only gonna be a, a one-bedroom apartment. And there may even be enough for, for, for two parking spaces, but for off-streets. It's, but, but the site plan provides for parking for this unit. So the congestion on the street issue, I really, I really don't think is there.
That I did look at the parking plan because I, I wanted to see what it showed on the site plan because when I drove by it, as I said, I, I thought it was congested, but I, I see the site, the plan here.
Yeah, so I've heard three-bedroom, I've heard three-unit, four-unit. How many kitchens are on the property right now?
There's three. It's a, it's an old-fashioned
Jerry, question is approved, there'll be four.
Right.
Okay, so there are four unique, separate rental income properties. If this particular owner says it's all family, but if this particular owner sells it, the next owner can put whomever he wants in four separate units, however he wants. They're four distinct, different units is what we'll, we'll be ended up with.
There's, it's a just one old-fashioned, three-story apartment house. It's been there for 100 years and it, the layout is a flat.
Because my, my recollection is during the first meeting, we discussed about it all being, they were all related or the
Well, he's got, John, John lives on the, on the top floor. We had a little juggle over. He ought to be moving down to, to avoid the stairs. But he and his wife and two, two adult children, 20 and 21, are, are, are living in the house now. There, I think there are a couple of ones in college and, so, and he's been there since 1986. It's not like he's, he's, he wants to move to town and, and, and max out
Yeah, I know. I'm just wondering if there's some kind of a compromise position we can reach here where there was a deed restriction that would, even though it's gonna still be for unique and separate, independent units, it could be used more as a family compound than affordable housing. To use a, not a very, you know, just wondering if there's some kind of a, you know, if this board could find it in the board's graces to grant this fourth unit, is there somehow the applicant could assure the town that this isn't just gonna become you know, four units that are subsidized housing that sometimes don't get taken care of well.
Well, because this is a one-bedroom, I think that, that, that should allay a lot of, of someone's fears about what's gonna be done with this one 800 square foot unit. You can't get an army
About the whole property. Now I'm thinking about making it for a four-family compound. A four-unit
And, and restrict the, the existing three units?
I, yeah. I'm, I'm trying to reach, I'm trying to find something that would, that would allow the applicant to have his cake and the board to eat it.
If I may, if I might interrupt, this would require a deed right or completely different application. Going to 40B, it will not work. And, and it's completely different application. We'll have to apply completely different under 40B.
Well, no, I'm not talking 40B. I'm talking about them voluntarily.
Well, then it needs a
Deed restriction on, a deed restriction on the property that it's either a family compound or, you know, it could be extended family, it could be
If you do it this way for affordable, it needs to call it deed right up.
No, 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 no.
Deed rider, sorry.
I, I wasn't trying to make it an affordable unit. I was trying to avoid it becoming that.
I think we've discussed it enough. I would like to close unless you want to add something. That's my opinion to close the public hearing. Would you like to add anything, counsel?
Let me just, let me just see, see what my, let me just check with my, my
Well, I, I don't know exactly this deed restriction thing.
Yeah, yes. So we have nothing further.
I think for, okay.
So you make a motion to close. I'll second it.
Okay, who's got a motion to close?
You want the motion?
I can't make it unless none of you makes
Okay, I'll move to close the, close the public portion of this, this applicant, this discussion.
And just for the record, Mr. Troy Larson would be voting for Mr. Morrison's seat. Okay, so we, do we have a second on closing public hearing?
I second.
Second, by Rich, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, any discussion? None? Okay, now what's the wishes?
Close. One, two, three. Uh, one, two, three.
Can I have a motion?
Five, zero, zero. Well, I make a motion to approve the variance.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Rich Sample to grant the variance, any discussion on that? Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second it, of course.
Second by Jim, any discussion on the second? I hear none, so this is how we're gonna do it. Uh, Veronica Devenese, are you yes or no?
No.
Jim Akabachi, yes or no?
Abstain.
Abstain. Troy Larson, yes or no?
Yes.
Richard Sample, yes or no?
Yes.
Myself, Nazir Al Kalasi, it's a no, so it didn't pass, thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, do you get that paper to sign?
Uh, no, we're gonna do the paper, the signing. You and I are gonna go in and sign it and write it all up, and then we're gonna send them in the.
All right, let's write notes in this. Troy. Rich, yes. Jim, abstain.
Okay, what was your vote, Veronica?
No. Veronica and Nazir, no. Okay. Very well, twenty six dash twenty two Dos Amigos Realty LLC, a variance, twelve large street, map thirty eight.
Hey stranger.
Hi.
Let's get right into the record already.
Continued. I just want to make sure, okay.
Here's the deal, I, I can't, I have a conflict with Dos Amigos.
Can I have the folders from the last airing in before we also?
You want to follow them or you want to wait for it?
Oh, for that one, yeah.
Um, I think I'd like to, uh, to open it up to the board for discussion, but possibly continue for vote, depending.
Was last time Jake here?
Jake was here.
Oh, okay, so good, good jump in on the, the Marlin rules next time.
Okay.
So you guys, Jim with chair, and you guys go at it.
The last one, unless you want to take it home. You can leave it in the file and not read it, or you can take it home and not read it.
It has these, um, memorandum from, from, uh, ten.
Yeah, I left it with mine.
You know, abstain, okay.
Oh, what, what?
Yeah. Two, two, one, okay.
Dos Amigos?
Yes.
And we, we are ready in.
And. Okay, excellent.
Just like to get everything, you know, I hate cross contaminating the fire.
All right, I'll introduce myself, Attorney Jillian Morton, one eighty four Main Street, I represent Dos Amigos, so while you're looking in your packets, I'm going to give you a little bit of background on what we're looking for here. So I represent, um, a potential purchaser on, um, this lot, um, it's twelve large street. So I think it's helpful to pull out that plan and take a look at it, so I can reference different items as I go along. This parcel is part of the nineteen twenty three subdivision over there, um, in Parkwood Beach, so each of those lots were, um, approximately point one acres. I think I included the older plan within your packet as well, as well as the um, assessors page, because I know that was something that you wanted to take a look at. Our location is assessed at point one nine acreage. The commissioner sent a letter back in June, a violation, two items that we're looking at. So we're looking at merger, the merger doctrine, um, and then we're looking at, um, an undersized lot, so a variance from that. So it was important for me to kind of tell you the history of this parcel, because those smaller lots, what happened is they merged, and in his letter, you can take a look at it. It happened way back in the eighties. So there was a lot that was, um, we're looking at five one two and five one three, so you see both of those lots merge in this one lot, twelve large street. And there was a conveyance of a smaller lot that merged with one of these lots, so they're essentially saying you can't build on this, um, that it's merged. My clients, um, and the, um, owners.
I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Of course.
The two merged lots.
So what happened is these lots are together, but there was a third, so.
Third lot that they were merged with?
Yeah, so these are all point one, so actually, believe in his letter, if you take a look at it, it would be helpful.
Okay.
So it's, um, lot five one three, so that, um, merged, it should have never been, um, it merged with the budding lot.
You're saying it should have never been peeled off of five one three?
Yeah.
Because they were on.
Yeah, all three were kind of merged.
All owned together.
Right, which I understand, the, the purpose of the, the merger doctrine, as you know, because we've had several in front of us, does just remind you, is under forty A, being able to make things more conforming, essentially, we want, we want, if there is vacant land, needs to be vacant land, it will merge with the, um, parcel next to it under common, common ownership. So I had to review that back title to take a look at what happened here, and this happened way before, the current owners were involved, they purchased in two thousand and six, this was a merger zoning issue back in nineteen eighty. So they're at a, a point here, and I kind of keep talking about the clients, I.
Again, I'm going to interrupt you.
Of course.
Just trying to follow. So they were all three one. Five one three peeled off, five one four and five one five, or part of five one four.
They merged under the merger doctrine.
And, and they, and they sold part of five one four and part of five one five.
Right.
To another party who never built.
And they're, and they're, this, um, map thirty five one four and five, uh, one five, if you drove down there, you saw that, that there's a house right there. So that's a separate lot, my lot is the one that's vacant.
That's, and that's the merger of part of five one four and part of five, and all of five one five.
Right.
Right, and that's never been built on.
There, so the assessors page said there was a shed on it, um, it's taxed.
And never a residence.
Yes, uh, never a residence, um.
There was never a, a sewer drop brought into it.
No, that's an, another piece of the puzzle, there is sewer and water flow for this parcel, so I've, um, that was the first thing. Yeah.
I just want to follow along so that I don't.
Jump in, jump in, it's kind of a complex one, so, um, so, you know, when I take these cases on, I want to check to see if there is sewer, because our moratorium, there is a sewer hookup there, there is flow for this new build. I've confirmed that with Mr. Campina, um, several times to just double check. So they've allocated, it was part of the master plan in this neighborhood, so they wouldn't need to be, you know, going front of this board and then not have sewer hookup. The proposal, um, is for a three bedroom Cape House. Dos Amigos, if you're familiar, um, has built, um, many different, um, single family homes in Wareham and surrounding areas. And this particular build will follow the nature of the other homes in the area. I actually did a assessment to try to figure out how, what is the average, um, lot size in this neighborhood, so I took about ten, twenty properties, um, and the average is point two acres, okay, and our lot is point one eight. So we're just under that. So I would say, although it looks, when you look at the numbers, the minimum lot area in R thirty is three hundred thousand square feet, if you look at the zoning table on the top of the plan, and we only have the eighty four hundred, it looks like this huge gap. Um, but if we're looking at the actual neighborhood and what is over there, um, I would say that this would be a lot, because it has frontage as well on both streets, Larch and Hemlock, it's pretty unique, to be able to add, we've already talked about housing here in Wareham, um, to add a single family. The hardship is real for both parties, um, for Dos Amigos looking to, um, build this and also the, the owners of the property. So the owners, um, purchased this lot, I don't think they knew back in two thousand and six about this merger issue. Um, they've been paying taxes on it, um, and it is a corner lot over there. And if they don't get this variance, yep.
They've been paying taxes on it.
Correct.
Do the tax records since they bought it reflect a buildable or a non-buildable lot, have they been taxed on a buildable or a non-buildable lot?
So it should be in your packet, it doesn't say unbuildable, it just says accessory, um, use. So there, I think it's exhibit C. I did try to put in the assessors page.
Don't keep interrupting you, but I just.
That's okay, there's a lot of information, so, um, it's been taxed as this accessory structure for like a shed or a garage.
It's been taxed as an accessory lot, it's appraised for it's appraised for nine thousand five hundred dollars.
Correct, and so.
And taxed on nine thousand five hundred.
Right, this being able.
Lot in Wareham is.
A current lot, a hundred thousand, hundred fifty, depending on where you are, grown up quite a bit, so.
Yeah, okay, just for the record, okay.
So, yeah, so you can see in the previous years, it's been taxed at a slower amount, so, um, there's absolutely hardship there for both parties, like I said, if we don't get, um, approval and you've shown that, okay, this is a merger doctrine, you have to live with it, it's going to stay with a lot, it's not going to be able to get added to the tax rolls as a, you know, build a four hundred thousand dollar house there for someone. So those are the issues in the case, the merger and the lot size, so I'd be interested to hear your opinions on, um, you know, each of those issues, and if there needs to be more explanation on either of those, um, I'm here to answer that.
I have a question.
Of course.
I'm trying to I have a couple of questions, I was looking at the map and trying to figure out what what lot is what, I can clearly see, I think, twelve, I'm page. I can see, I think that's a twelve. But all of the other lots that are around that, I don't know what the numbers are.
Uh, if I may, through the chair, so is it the smaller plan that you're looking at, the older nineteen twenty?
The only one that is.
Yep. Okay. So it is, um, it's kitty cornered on Larch Ave, and it's not labeled, but it's Hemlock, so it's the corner lot, and I have circled it on here if you want to, um, see it.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, so it's on the assessors, on the attach. If you want to, Jimmy.
All right, I'll find it, I'll just let me, I'll fumble through here, there it is, I got it.
So I'm trying to figure out what these are, they have numbers in them. But, uh, what lot numbers, that's what I was trying to figure.
Um, so the one next to the one, the plan, you're, so, yep, that is, um, the map thirty five one four, five one five.
It's five one.
Fourteen and fifteen.
This is fourteen and fifteen.
Correct. Yep.
And then to the left is.
Five, ten and five eleven.
This is ten and eleven here, and then twelve is by itself.
Twelve is with this lot, twelve and thirteen is, so it's that's interesting because the title calls it a certain lots, but it's five twelve and five thirteen are the lots that, um, make up twelve large.
Twelve and thirteen.
Yep.
Okay, and, and so then, okay, so that helps me understand what this letter is that says five thirteen should not have been separated.
Correct.
In, you know, whatever year, nineteen eighty.
Yeah.
To be sold.
I'm still.
To Alice.
Do you mind?
Yep, yep.
We got thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. Yeah, is, is it these three, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen? This one? This one? This one, this.
These are actually two smaller lots.
Okay. So i- is this, are, are, are yours really over here somewhere, this twelve and thirteen, and this is fifteen? Fifteen and part of fourteen?
Yeah.
It made it more conforming. So this is where kind of the legal theory, this merger doctrine gets, um, in the real life, not.
Clear as mud.
Exactly, so you have a property owner who's owned the property, um, since two thousand and six, now having to kind of deal with, looking to convey this out to get the house developed. And essentially saying, well, there was a merger back twenty two years ago.
But I'm, I'm confused because I thought this, the owner pays for taxes on this lot that are not, it's not taxed as a buildable lot. And it's labeled that as an accessory. These lots.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, so he could just go build a garage there, essentially is, is, but that's why we're in front of you, because I'm saying that, in my opinion, when you, we took the overall view of this neighborhood, this is actually considered a double lot, there are some lots that are only point one over in that neighborhood, I know they're, they're existing non-conforming, understand that. But if we really are trying to look at lots here in Wareham that have sewer hookup, or have the frontage, we're not looking for five variances, we're looking for these twos, really it's lot size, if you decide that merger can be broken, then it's the lot size is the other piece you have to say, okay, is this too small?
Took me a while, now I know exactly where I am.
Not to make things more confusing, but I read something about an easement, what, what is happening with an easement on these properties?
An easement was.
Yeah, I, in the deeds, I was reading this earlier today, and I, I
Oh, within the deeds.
Realized there were so many deeds.
I, I didn't pull that particular easement, um, but if it was an easement that would have affected access, the engineers would need to put that on the plan, so if you're thinking like there's a easement to go across there, it could just be some I could pull it to see, but I didn't think that was necessarily something that we needed right now, but I can pull that book and page.
Just makes it a little bit more confusing anyway, but.
I know, I know.
I guess one thing at a time, trying to understand. So the neighbors currently, I, I drove through there. And you're saying that the neighbors, most of the properties are point twenty acres?
Yes. That was the average.
But since, was it since eighty six, that the, or since, what year did it change to become that it was, uh, that is a how many, how many is required, point sixty eight now?
Yeah, they want three hundred square feet for the lot size, so we're, you know, we are quite under it.
And do you know what year that happened?
I don't, I don't have it off the top of my head, eighty.
Well, in nineteen seventy nine, the lot was purchased and the requirement was thirty thousand square feet. So I think it was very clear all the way back since nineteen seventy nine. At least. Oh, nineteen fifty two.
Are you looking at the assessors?
I'm looking at, yes, no, Paul Turner's letter, it says that in nineteen fifty two, the lots five thirteen, five fourteen and five fifteen came into common ownership, so I'm assuming that's because it was thirty thousand, so since nineteen fifty two, the thirty thousand square foot requirement has been in existence. That's just what I want, wanted to know, like, because I see a lot of deeds and purchasing going on, I just wanted to know what information somebody might have had at the time of purchase.
Yeah, I, I'd have to look into that, um, I think when I went back through the title of everything, that it was a situation that, whether it was familial, going back and forth, they unfortunately didn't keep things separate, and it did merge, so those lots.
Do, do, off the top of your head, do you know when the, um, zoning in that neighborhood went to thirty thousand square feet?
I don't, I can look that up, though, I can make note of that.
I, I got a feeling we're not going to make a decision tonight, that's something we need when we come back.
I, I think it was nineteen fifty two.
Fifty two came.
Going to Turner's letter.
It was when it transferred title was, I thought.
Oh, no, common ownership, in seventy nine, they were conveyed when it was thirty thousand square feet, so between fifty two and seventy nine, we don't know the exact date.
But I know a lot of people in Wareham have been denied the ability to use land because they bought the lot next door. I can tell you from personal experience, my mom and dad bought two lots. Put a house straddling the two lots. And between them and their neighbor was a vacant lot that was deemed buildable. And the guy was going to build a retirement home on it. And my dad said, gee, that would be beautiful. I'd love to have a retirement home right there. Sell this big arc. I don't have a house full of kids anymore and I could move right there and stay in the neighborhood.
Mm-hmm.
I'm sorry, he said to my father, sorry, it's going to be my retirement. So my dad said, oh, if you ever change your mind, let me know. Well, lo and behold, several years later, the guy called him back and said, yeah, I'll sell you the lot. So he bought the lot and he went for building permit and guess what he got?
Murder.
A middle finger, right?
Yep.
So.
Well, that's why we have.
A lot of people. I mean, there's a nice way of saying it, but I think the way I said it is most appropriate. Um. So, um, you know, that's what we have here. I was, I'm going to cut right to the point. That's exactly what we have here. These people owned the lot, the land, when it became a thirty thousand square foot zoning. They very cleverly took some of it and they separated it and they drew a plan for two lots and they sold off a piece of land that wasn't developable as a residence. And they waited enough years and hoped that they got a dumb enough zoning board that, um, it would be a good chance to put a house on it and cash in. And as chair of this application, I'd want to see the taxes paid retroactively to compensate. Because they've been paying taxes. I mean, if we were, if we were generous enough to say, yeah, sure, go ahead, build on it. We need another house in Wayham right down near the water. And the number four hundred thousand's been thrown around and we could use the tax revenue from a four hundred thousand dollar house. But we could also use the retroactive tax revenue for all these years. They haven't been paying for a buildable lot. If it's going to be deemed a buildable, then if it's buildable, then they haven't been paying enough taxes. They owe some back taxes. So I'm just speaking my mind because, um, what's going to happen is Pandora's box is getting opened up wider and wider and wider here. I don't know why the town put a sewer drop onto that lot, but I'm just, I'm just giving you all, I'm giving you as much ammunition as I, as I can. So when you come back, because I'm going to recommend we continue tonight, because if we vote tonight, I already know how I'm voting.
Well, let me ask you this.
Give everybody a fair chance.
Right, right. Um, let me ask you this. If merger wasn't an issue with the lots, so take completely merger out of that, which I think it would be helpful if I kind of you have this current plan, but some of the older plans to show you what, what happened in particular, and then finding the actual zoning date changes. So then you can see the timeline that goes along with it. But if that merger wasn't into it, in it, just looking at lot size.
If I was just looking at lot size and it was never owned by the same people, I'd have a whole different attitude. But the fact of the matter is, it was owned by the same people. And I don't think they were ignorant to what they did. I think it was done. I'm just looking at it right now and under my five minutes worth of study on this lot looks like it was very cleverly manipulated so that there'd be a reason to come in front of a board and say, we have a hardship. And I don't believe in creating hardships. I just, you know, and when there's a real hardship, I want to grant relief. But when somebody is smart enough to know how to work around the rules and create and manipulate a hardship, I think they're abusing this board.
So if I may, I respectfully disagree with that.
I know.
Well, what I think will be helpful, I don't think that that was the intention here because I, I see it on title when I see that happening. So I think what I'm going to do is pull all the deeds and essentially give you a memorandum that you guys can look at before the next hearing that will show each deed and what conveyed to him.
Be good information, but, um, Veronica, were you done with your questions? We never gave.
Pretty much. Yeah.
Any questions?
Not at this time.
Seems we're going to, seems we're going to continue it. Well, I'm not saying we're going to, but I'm thinking that it might make sense. I, um, before we go any further, I'd like to see if there's anybody from the public here that's here on this matter. Is anybody here that's here on this matter? Would like to have any comments?
Yes.
Come up, pick a microphone, say your name, your address. You don't have to give your blood type, but.
I'm Jennifer Loveall and I live.
And who's that gentleman beside you?
Ronald McCann.
Ron McCann, you're both from Wayham.
Five hemlock. I own the property and I own five fourteen and five sixteen and I do have a house on that property. So, um.
Our concern is we're trailing the boat in and out of there and there's only.
You gotta, you gotta.
Yep.
You gotta speak to the microphone. There'll be a line of people looking for autographs because you're on television now. When you go out, they'll want to know, you'll be famous, but.
Well, our concern is we, we trailer a boat in and out of there. Uh, we only have one way to get in and out of our home. It's a dead end and there's water.
Are you, are you the? You have five fifteen, is it?
Five fourteen, five fifteen. It's, it's a merged lot.
The, the fifteen and the half of fourteen that were merged together.
I, I don't know what half they're talking about because my map is, I have all of, yeah, yeah, I'll figure.
Fight the attorney that's representing the other party to come back and explain to us, but.
Yeah.
So you're the one that's, you're the waterfront property.
Right, right. Yes.
And you, and you haul a boat in and out of.
We trailer a boat in and out of there.
On the street or out of the water and into your property?
Oh, street.
The street. We go in Tempest Harbor where we drop it in, but it's parked at home.
Yeah.
And on your own property.
Correct.
Yeah.
Um, we have two cars and the boat. Um, and again, there's only one way in and one way out for us. And my also concern is, um.
Street's not wide enough?
Right.
It's, it's, there is no street. It's dirt. There's no barrier, barriers. There's no formal, uh, intersection, if you would. It's, it's actually very wet down there.
Okay.
Yeah. And the, the property they're talking about building on at lunar high tide, the water comes all the way to the back.
It's a flood plain. Super long. These people will have waterfront property for like four days.
Stilts and looking over the top.
Right. But even they could drive into their driveway.
Correct.
So, I mean.
This is, these are.
Uh, seeing it all.
I'm sorry, I'm talking with you and I should just let you, so what's your, your concern?
All right, they're going to build this structure. It's going to be on stilts and that's the only way I see it happening. Um. I'm formally trained as a plumber in my background, so I've been around construction and we actually wanted to purchase this property two years ago. And that, because it's a corner lot, uh, we are neighbors, everyone's close down there. We want to kind of beautify the place up. Because it's nothing but a, uh, it's clean now because he sold the property and all that other stuff that went down behind closed doors. It's just, you know, I mean, who, you know, we're going to go and turn a profit. That's what we're all looking for, right? But who's going to be buying this? He's going to be gone with his check and who's going to be living there? You know, what kind of quality people are going to be living there? Um, I got, we have a grandson on the way.
Yeah.
Um. Yeah. And I, I just don't see it's practical. I mean, you're trying to slam a, uh, six sardines in a four, uh, can for four.
Well. I get, I get.
You already have that in that neighborhood anyway.
You know, it's, yeah, it's tight down.
Yeah. Well, I know when I put my shed on my property.
Right.
I mean, I couldn't even use half of my property because it's within fifty feet of the marshland. And actually the property they're wanting to build on, the first fifty feet of it is touching the marshland. So they're not, I, I don't even know.
Whole property is in the marshland.
Hmm.
That's correct.
No, not the whole thing, but it.
The first fifty feet of it, and we were told we couldn't put any building within fifty feet. So we got our shed approved.
Because we don't want to go down.
Yeah.
No, no. About peanuts and eating. Fairly. Fun, you know?
Yeah.
Um. Your objection is you can't get your boat down the road the way it is now. And if they build a house.
And it's not so, it's, well, that's just one. I mean, you know, again, how many cows are we going to have over there? Um, again, who's buying the house? Uh, you know?
But yeah, my objection would be in the winter time, you get one narrow, they clean the snow, one narrow. So you can't park on the road at all and you can barely get in and out with.
I guess you'd have to go dry bike to understand what works.
Yeah, we probably will in the meantime.
Yeah.
The road is certainly, looking at, I'm looking at the local, I'm looking at this and it looks like on paper, the road is plenty big. It's bigger than what is um, in other areas of the neighborhood.
Doesn't show the vegetation. It doesn't show the vegetation.
Yeah, it's all covered over. So.
But I mean, if you went down there right now, it's, it, the slot is pretty much a lake.
Face, but there's still a face underneath there. You know?
I, correct.
Doesn't change.
No, I understand. Understood.
Yeah. And that road's not maintained right now either. So like there's water in the road, standing in the road year round, pretty much. So.
Any other comments or concerns?
No, no.
Your concern is safe.
Basically, yeah.
You know? Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the room tonight that is here on this matter? Okay, here and none. Um, you guys have no further questions?
Nope.
I'm not, I'm not satisfied at this point. Would you like to request a continuance?
Request a continuance.
Um, we have a request for a continuance. You guys okay with that?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to continue.
You got a second to that?
I got a second.
Okay, we got, it's been first, it's been, it's been requested by the applicant, motion by Veronica, seconded by Richard to continue. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Let's have it. Thank you for your time. Thank you for working with us. Thank you. Two weeks, right?
Two weeks.
Uh, the next meeting is every, every, the second and fourth meeting, fourth Wednesday of every month.
It'll be the twenty-eighth.
Next meeting will be the twenty-eighth.
Next item on the agenda, twenty-seven dash twenty-two, Carlton White, junior, seventeen West Central Ave. There's been read for the record. Last time, right? You guys opened it?
Yep.
Yes. Need you name an address for the record?
Uh, Carlton White, seventeen West Central Ave and onset.
All right. All right, let's hear it. The note has been read in part and to the record last time, so we're not going to read the note as I can. So let's.
Okay. Um. Well, if, if, if I could, I put it enclosed in a packet, a note to the board.
Yep.
Um, kind of laying out my, um, my thoughts on regarding the appeal. Would you mind if I read it or?
Yeah, go, go ahead.
Uh, this, this appeal is regarding our building permit request for, to raise and reconstruct our single family home at seventeen West Central onset. Our permit was denied based on a, the FAR uh, ratio, the F A R ratio.
Floor area ratio.
Yes. And it was forty-one percent, which is more than the allowed thirty percent for a lot size. Our, our proposed footprint for the first floor, now proposed, plus the front porch is about twenty-seven percent of the overall lot size of seven, uh, three thousand seven hundred and fifty feet. The current footprint is approximately twenty-six percent. So um, the, the actual footprint of the house is not changing very much at all. Um, our proposed site plan and architectural drawings for the home are very nearly what is already existing for a current home as to the actual footprint. The proposed footprint has met our, certainly our objectives for preserving the current character of the home that goes with the neighborhood as well as uh, when we have been used, what we've been used to for open spaces around the house. Um, we wanted to preserve as much open space around our house. Um, maintaining uh, that part is a priority. At the same time, we have added, and this is where I've gotten into trouble with the, the F A R ratio. I've added over our, the back part of the house, we have a single story. Uh, it was probably added on, I don't know, fifty years ago or something or, or longer. And it, it's basically a kitchen and a bathroom. And, um, and there is a small, uh, amount of foundation cellar under that. And so what we wanted to do was put the second floor there that we could accommodate two, uh, small bedrooms, reasonably sized, but two small bedrooms. And then there is, um, which is pretty typical of a lot of the houses down there is like a wraparound porch around the front and around the side. And years ago, at some point, that one, one section that was enclosed as part of the living room, we wanted to build up over that. So adding that square footage to the second floor is what's hurled me over this ratio. But, you know, I think that the ratio is a pretty tough thing for you, I'm sure, because when, when I started comparing all of the other properties in the area, a lot of the existing homes in the area are, are well over that thirty percent. Some of them are sixty percent. There's some three stories down there that I would say are a hundred percent, although I can't find the records in, in the town yet because they're relatively new. Um. But what I did also is I added in a, a section, a table in there. I don't know if you saw this in the packet. And basically, what I've laid out is our current structure, what the specs are on it, what the proposed would be. And then the, the other structures that I've had, that I put on this are the folks that would have received an invitation to this hearing or the last hearing. And, uh, because they're my neighbors, um, on that, on that block and across the street. And so the purpose of this document was really just to show that basically how well I think my home fits into the rest of the neighborhood there. If e- even if you look at the, the, the square footage of the total living space, you know, uh, I'm, I'm pretty good in the, the new, in the proposed, the forty-one and a quarter. Um, direct the butters are fifty-three point oh one, forty-two point nine six. Um, two other direct butters, one is thirty-three point three six and the other is sixty-two point four three. And that's in the living space. In the, when you look at the footprint, which I, I think is really what preserves the neighborhood, you know, to the best of our ability, is the, uh, in that area, um, at twenty-six point two eight percent for, um, my proposed structure. I think there's one home, there's one home that has a better, uh, footprint along those lines. And that is an extraordinary, uh, sized lot. It's really, uh, a, a huge double lot, seven thousand foot, uh, square foot lot, uh, very large. So, I mean, based on what, you know, what, the attraction for us to that area is all these little houses, you know, and all of the, uh, and we, we're fortunate that we have some space with ours. We even have a driveway. So, um, our intention is to preserve all that and to fit in with the neighborhood. And, um, looking for, um, I guess an approval for my request based on the fact that, uh, I'm, I, I took a lot of pains to try and stay at least in the, within the footprint, uh, as much as I could. Um. I had considered overhang in that back section of the, of the, uh, second floor and maintaining precisely the footprint, but I was told that those are very difficult to get approved to have like the old garrison type of houses with the overhang. And so we, we decided if we picked up an extra two and a half feet on the back section, that would accommodate these bedrooms upstairs. So that's, that's my case. I'm sticking to it.
All right. Very well. You did very good home, good job doing your homework with the sheet.
Thank you.
That's very good to see the neighbors. However, we need architecture plans.
They should have been included in the architectural plans to the, uh.
I, we need something bigger than this and has to show the F A R here. It doesn't show, and this is unreadable.
I know it.
Two by three plans.
I did.
Architecture plans.
I did also, uh, leave Sonia with a very large full-size plan and, um, architectural plans of the house.
I can't hear.
Six pages. I know I can't either. But it, in, in my, um, in the application, it requested, uh. But it, in, in my, um, in the application, it requested, uh, eight and a half by eleven sheet in, in this. So I put it in, but I did include the, uh, the full-size architect.
This for the, for the requirements.
Right.
Which you gave us in architectural as well, but we don't have it here. So you did turn one in?
Yes. Yep, full-size plan stamped.
Here, Nazir, it might be stapled on the
Like a big one.
That's.
The image is the one page, still, uh, the chair is asking you.
I also sent everything electronically, too.
So
And I did.
I have the actual plans here.
And I did pester Sonia regularly for what.
All right, we're gonna need the plan, but let's discuss it quick. So now that we have some, I'm like, how about the footprint? Are you changing the footprint?
The footprint in the back, uh, on the, um, the side that is, uh, that has the bulkhead. On that side, that wall is coming out about two feet, and then on the other side, you can see how it's kind of tapered in there. That is, just gets squared off. And so the total of the two of them is about two and a half feet bigger than the current footprint back there.
All right.
And really, that bulkhead is, you know, the, uh.
What's F A R here? Why it's not on the plan? What's allowed use?
It should be in the lower corner there, I think.
Thirty percent is F A R there?
Yes.
And you look thirty, and you're looking for forty?
Yes.
And what do you have now? That should have been on.
I, I have twenty one, about twenty one. I don't, I don't think, I'm not sure if I saw that there.
Okay, you have twenty one.
About twenty one, twenty one point eight, yeah.
All right. We, we could, we could discuss that. On the, on the building coverage and the impervious surface, because you're an existing non-conforming, the board can act upon as a special permit if the board feels there's no such detriment to the neighborhood. However, on the F A R, it's definitely gonna have a variance because you in compliance with the F A R. Uh, we could start discussing it. So we have two things here, if we can.
The only thing the commissioner has denied him on is F A R. Only thing he's denied him on.
Well, uh, impervious as well as bigger, going higher, see another one percent, he probably didn't. Because he has existing twenty six going to twenty seven and fifty three going to fifty four. Which we could do this as a special permit, not a problem. So the most important thing, the F A R, let's discuss F A R now, and we'll, we'll wait for architectural plans for next time. Veronica, what do you, Veronica, what do you think?
Uh, so I reviewed all of your documents and stuff ahead of time, um, and there are a few, um, questions that I have for you for what you want to do. As I think we all know, living here, Onset is pretty congested in some areas, and that road in particular, um, it's, he's never anywhere to park. It seems to be very difficult, um. So what I was trying to understand what you were saying about, are you trying to add a second kitchen so that you have a second unit? You said there was.
No, no, second floor for two bedrooms over the kitchen.
Okay, okay.
Because the, yeah, the back kitchen, it's.
I went by your property.
Yeah, someone mentioned that you.
Yes, yeah, and your, your neighbor had nothing but good things to say about you.
She's, she's.
Um, but my concern about the F A R in Onset is always congestion, and that's one of the reasons why floor area ratio becomes important because Onset by right, in a W two dwelling, you could put a second apartment, which obviously would increase the amount of people coming and going, pretty much typically if you end up with two families there. So that's my main concern. Yeah, I'm very happy to hear that you're looking to just have a single family, so, um, that's good. I don't know how, um, that being the case, I'm all for what you would like to do with this, um, because I don't, you're talking about two bedrooms. The only concern that I have is if we allow you to go to one thousand five hundred forty seven square feet, my concern then becomes the next person that buys your property, if they want to split it up and make a second unit, there's a minimum requirement that they have to meet. I don't remember what the amount is.
It won't make it.
Wouldn't they be denied?
Six fifty, thirteen hundred. So anything over thirteen hundred could then be divided. Um, so I guess I, I would be fine with this project if there were some kind of restriction to keeping this as a single-family dwelling. I guess that's.
Dan.
Ken, how do you feel about uh, uh, recorded, get to registry on your data restriction that this always remain of the single-family home?
Absolutely.
You'd have no problem?
No problem at all. Excuse me?
If we're through with it.
Yeah, it, you know, I, yeah, yeah.
But I still wanna see an architecture there, and, and the size has to be under thirteen hundred square feet.
Under thirteen hundred?
What's your total, you have, what's your total?
Fifteen forty, oh, of the living space? Yeah, fifteen forty seven. I'd have to.
Including if you exclude bathrooms and hallways and closets.
It, it's gonna be under that. And the other thing, what about stairways? Um, I mean, currently, right now, the stair we have in there is somewhere between a stair and a ladder, and, uh, so we're gonna put, you know, real legitimate stairs on the left-hand side.
This is what I want you to do next time. You're gonna bring it, outback engineering, you're gonna show the F A R on the stable. Bring your architectural plans, showing the living space without hallway stairs, bathroom, like closets.
Okay.
How much living space? Come back to us next time. How's that?
Yes.
Before we go, uh, Troy, before we go. I didn't think you were gonna wait.
I, I actually like the plan, so I don't really have any questions right now. I'd like to look at them. I'm fine with that.
All right, on the public, who wants to speak in favor? Sorry to do.
Public, go ahead.
Anyone in favor?
On this matter?
Or against? Jimmy, sorry, I passed.
No problem. It wouldn't hurt, it would help me. Um, and you, you did a great job, by the way.
Yeah, that, thank you.
Represent yourself, you're representing yourself very well. It wouldn't hurt, it would be helpful if we had, um, current photographs of your property and up and down the street, and the ones, some of the ones that you put on this chart are just, you know, a general of.
Sounds, sounds like he turned it all in, it just didn't get to us.
You turn pictures too, photographs?
I, you know, it's, it's, it seemed like the most she would want would be one, and so I didn't, I didn't put that in, but.
So next time, get a few pictures, okay?
I have, you know, I do have small architectural plans right here. This should have been included.
Can you get the plans two by three, architecture, and this, I think it's possible?
Yes. This is, uh.
If you can't get the architect to draw by the next, just ask for continuance.
Okay.
Do you have the set already drawn?
I have a set here.
Oh, so you already have one, we just don't have.
Yeah, yeah. It should, okay, and it, it went electronically.
She, he, he bent over backwards, got everything to Sonia. For some reason, we just don't have it in our package, so we need to have all that put in front of us, and we can vote on it.
Can you get a two by three next time? At least one, so we can see it better.
Two by three, yeah.
I'll have your architect add up the numbers with our closets, hallways.
Okay.
Bathroom and stairs.
Okay.
Okay, that being said, can we get a motion to continue?
So move.
Do I have a second on the motion to continue? The second by Troy, all in favor, say aye.
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 Pros abstain, so we'll see you on the twenty eight.
Twenty eight. The, these additional documents, deliver them to Sonia?
Or bring them with you next time.
Bring them with, okay.
It's better you deliver them.
Okay.
But if you don't have time, just bring them with you.
No, no problem.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item on the agenda.
Vic, did you see them as part of an email? Because I looked at the email, I looked online.
He sat right there and said that he had given everything to Sonia.
You didn't see that?
Oh, he said that he had, we didn't, we just didn't what he just said there. He explained that he had bent over backwards. Doesn't know why we don't. I, I do. Because that office is shut at the end of day, lost their assistant.
And Sonia's been away for a couple weeks, so that's what happened.
So we're working on the round. Not that jump.
Not his fault.
You're absolutely right.
That's all right. That's not the end of the world. It's only gonna be two weeks, right? Yeah, all right, so.
The neighborhood planning office.
Everybody's. What is his name? What happened with this?
All right, continue public hearing, twenty eight dash twenty two Wareham PV one LLC, zero root twenty five. There you go.
We got. Yeah, perfect.
So this is, um, I think this has already been read in last meeting. It was continued.
Yep.
But nobody knows what's going on, so the chair is ready, it's gonna invite you to
Sure.
Get us up to speed.
So I guess the note has been read.
Yes.
For the records, name and address for the record, and let's hear it. Name and address, man?
My, my address?
Yes, name and address.
Haley Orvadell, um, on behalf of Long Road Energy and my home address?
The office address.
Oh, uh, I think, I think it's three thirty Congress Street in Boston.
Okay, so, so let's hear what's, uh, Brian, we do that. What's, what do you look at for the variance?
Yeah, so I'm, and Betsy, I think you're on mute. Um.
I am, I apologize.
Betsy, uh, tested positive for COVID over the weekend, which is why she can't be here, but she is really gonna lead this on.
Boom.
Yeah, yeah, and she's gonna kind of lead most of this on, on behalf of us. Um, and then Sarah is on our engineering team and.
The only thing we can get from her is a computer virus.
Yes, that's right.
Yeah, which, which is probably just as well. Um, yeah.
Of the internet.
Uh, Betsy Mason with Clavens Law Group, uh, for Long Road Energy, um, oh, there I am. Uh, four twenty Boylston Street in Boston, Massachusetts, um, and is, is.
One second, Betsy.
Time out.
Sure, sure, sure.
Laurie, I gotta give you the floor to speak. You can't speak if I don't give you the floor.
Oh, my apologies. I was just introducing myself.
And we're gonna wait on some more volume, Betsy, for you.
Who would like to? Okay, so let's put your volume up. I need you name and address, Bessie, her name?
Betsy.
Betsy. Uh, name and address for the record, please?
Uh, yes, Betsy Mason with Clavens Law Group, uh, for Long Road Energy, address is four twenty Boylston Street in Boston, Massachusetts.
Okay, so let's hear it.
All right, well, we are here before you this evening, um, seeking a variance for certain, from certain setback requirements, uh, uh, and we can, we're obviously going to discuss them at great length, but um, but I can sort of back up and give you the big picture, but first, um, I want to say Haley introduced Sarah Eba, who is with VHB, and, uh, if we could allow Sarah to share her screen, it will make everything that I'm saying a lot. Uh, it, it'll be more useful, I think, for both the board and, and members of the public to see, um, specifically what we're talking about here. So, um, Longer Energy, uh, actually it's project company, Wareham PV one LLC, uh, filed a site plan review application with the planning board for this three point five megawatt project, uh, on a parcel, uh, known as zero root twenty five, right off a charge pond road, right behind the municipal maintenance facility. Um, and, uh, we've been, uh, going back and forth, uh, mostly productively with the planning board over the course of the past year, because we did file last September, uh, on a number of issues. Um, we have been working to respond to questions that not just the board and the peer reviewer raised, but as I said, also the public, to the extent, um, you know, the public has raised issues. Uh, and one of the big issues, uh, or at least one of the issues that has been the topic, that was a topic of discussion for quite some time, was uh, setback requirements. What are the setback requirements, uh, for this particular project, which were, which are applicable to this project? As you know, the bylaw has, um, uh, a solar, uh, solar section, and, uh, let me just preface that by saying, um, and I won't go too far into this, but I can certainly answer questions, um, because for a number of reasons, we're operating under not the newly adopted bylaw, uh, but the prior version of the bylaw. Um, so, um, that version of the bylaw in sections five ninety four, one point three, one point four, and one point five, uh, basically imposes fifty-foot setbacks, uh, in combination with vegetated buffers. So you've got this fifty-foot vegetated buffer, uh, all the way around a, uh, large ground-mounted solar energy facility, uh, in certain circumstances. Um, and I can get into more detail here, but, uh, essentially we don't believe that the requirements apply to this project, uh, just based on the plain language of those sections of the bylaw. Uh, the planning board disagrees, uh, and we've, we've tried to come to, uh, uh, a middle ground on what seems reasonable for, uh, for setbacks, given the location of the project. Um, and the, the the image you have before you, uh, which is, uh, basically shows the parcel, uh, with it, with the panels, and it's in green, uh, is, uh, probably maybe the third or fourth iteration of, uh, our plans, uh, and this is, uh, this is basically, uh, as you can see, does not show fifty-foot setbacks, but does show vegetated buffer, uh, of various sizes along certain, uh, boundaries of, or certain of the projects' boundaries. Uh, basically, we believe that the planning board has more or less, um, I won't say that they've approved this because they haven't, uh, and I won't say that they've, you know, flat out agreed to it, but, um, basically, the planning board suggested that, um, if we were to set aside the disagreement over what the actual meaning of these applicable provisions is, um, and, you know, sort of set that, that technical word-based squabble aside and just focused on what, uh, what setbacks would be appropriate for this parcel based on the location and the, the nature of the surrounding parcels, um, that we would, we would come up with this plan, and the planning board could not itself waive the fifty-foot setback vegetated buffer requirement, um, but that the the zoning board of appeals obviously could grant a variance from those requirements. So, um, essentially in consultation with the planning board and after some conversation, um, and again, I won't say recommendation, but conversation with, uh, town planner Buckland, um, we've come to you to see if we can, um, in fact, get a variance from those setback requirements, very wordy. So, um, Sarah, can we sort of do more of a comparison now? Uh, uh, so, obviously, and as, you know, the, the, there's several, uh, matters before this one, you know, this evening, uh, at least a couple of them pertain to variances, so we, we, the, the board has already, um, enumerated, uh, uh, the, the three basic criteria under both state law and the town's bylaw, uh, for, uh, what's necessary for to grant a variance, um, and, uh, essentially, we believe we have satisfied, uh, each of those three criteria. Uh, the first criterion, uh, has to do with whether there are circumstances relating to the soil condition, shape, or topography of the land or structures for which the variance is requested, which especially affect the land that is this parcel, but do not generally affect the zoning district in which the parcel is located. Um, here, uh, we basically have, uh, unique circumstances that affect just this parcel, uh, in the form of the, the fairly unique or unusual configuration of this parcel. Uh, you know, I, I described it in my, uh, application, my letter that accompanied the variance petition as, uh, you know, it's a, a musical note, or an upside-down axe, or perhaps a golf club, but, uh, the, the point is. As, you know, it's a musical note or an upside down axe or perhaps a golf club, but the the point is, this is not your standard nice. You know, square or even roughly, you know, trapezoidal parcel. This is a very strange, winding, lengthy, skinny parcel. And we have essentially tried to make the best of it and to put to to basically put this otherwise. Unused parcel into the stream of commerce, as it were, to make good use of it, highest and best practical use of the of the parcel. By proposing the solar facility. So. You know, what what is so unique about it? Just to sort of give details. The parcel's a little bit more than a half half mile from north to south. At the top, it's about. Oh. Maybe a little bit over a tenth of a mile wide, and the bottom, it's a little bit over like more more than that, but as you'll note, the entire middle section. Essentially, that's no more than hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty feet wide, which does not leave a lot of room to do much of anything. So. Basically, we our position is that the shape. It just makes it hard to. But that's a unique circumstance. Second criterion is, and the first hearing this evening went into this quite a bit. You know, is there, would literal enforcement of the bylaw provisions that we're seeking the variance from. Poses substantial hardship, whether financial or otherwise, that is based on the these unique circumstances. So in other words, here. Would in would would enforcing the front, the the front yard, side yard, and backyard setbacks that the planning board. Believes should be, or at least initially took the position should be applied here, would would application of those. Cause financial substantial hardship to the petitioner, to the property owner. Here, and in short, here's where I should really let a picture speak a thousand words that I'm not being a markedly articulate and getting out of my mouth, and I'll blame COVID for that, so my apologies. But the the image on the bottom, the figure on the bottom shows, yes, where the where Sarah's pointing the red. This is, this is what. Imposition of that fifty foot setback slash vegetated buffer would look like. I mean, we didn't fill it in in green, so you couldn't see it vegetated, but you can see that we've. Composed that setback on on the parcel boundaries and then attempted to fit. Panels within within that that those constricted. Areas. So bottom line is, we go from. Close to eight hundred and fifty panels to just about six hundred panels, six hundred and fourteen panels. And it may not sound like a very big difference, but in fact, there's an impact to. The megawatt capacity that the project can have with with this reduced, this reduction in the number of panels. And. So that that will make things that essentially. Leaves Long Road in a position of, you know, perhaps, perhaps the project is not, in fact, financially viable. Another hardship, another. Point of hardship is if you see in the bottom on the northern part part of the property, which is actually to the, yes, up where Sarah's pointing. It's actually impossible to fit the access access road into the northern portion of the site without going into that fifty foot setback. And the reason it's important to have an access road, obviously, the the access road has to be twenty feet wide. There has to be an access road. To comply with the fire code and Long Road has, you know, gotten sign off from the fire chief for a twenty foot access road here. He's requiring that. So it it. It. Renders things even more difficult, makes it even more of a difficult build. So. To kind of sum that part up, I mean. In short, the fifty foot buffer that starts each property boundary and extends inwards towards the center of the property, as you can see here, really leaves a. Pretty large portion of the property, which is already difficult to build on, unbuildable, and. Could render the the. Project financially unworkable, because we're really sort of scaling it down to fit onto these slivers. I think that's most noticeable in that that male stretch. Further, there would be substantial hardship to the the current landowner because he is expecting a rental income stream. But if Long Road is unable to build the project because it's not financially viable, then there will be no project and therefore no rental income stream. So that's. You know, to be somewhat crude, money out of his pocket, but more, perhaps more importantly, money out of the community's pocket because, you know, that's money that would be going to the community. In addition. There's just the substantial hardship to. The town in that if the project doesn't go forward any. Tax payments that that would be, you know, that the Long Road would be paying to the town over the life of the project. I mean, I understand this is perhaps speculative, but I mean, that's hardship. Nonetheless, that that tax income will not flow to the town. And finally, in a little bit more. You know, theoretically, figuratively, you know, the substantial hardship to the electric grid and to. Efforts to move away from fossil fuels and move towards renewable energy. So. Finally, and and certainly not not the least important is that we do believe that. This board can grant this variance without running afoul of the bylaws overall or causing some great harm to the public good. We're gonna be complying with all of the other applicable provisions of the bylaw. The property is, as actually at least one planning board member has acknowledged, is actually a very good location for a solar facility because it is. While it's in a residential district, it is not adjacent to any residential. Property or use. In fact, it's stuck behind the municipal maintenance facility. I know it's got that on one side and. Cranberry bogs on the other, so it's, as as things go in a in a town as developed as as Wareham, it's it's a fairly isolated location, at least one that's. You know, setback and and not likely to cause any. You know, noxious effects on on the surrounding neighborhood. It's not, it's not. Granting the variance and variances thereby allowing the project to go forward means this parcel, you know, won't be developed as, you know, some kind of a commercial facility or a, you know. A subdivision of some number of houses with increased traffic. There really will just be maybe one or two truck visits a month if that. For maintenance and monitoring. And. Finally. I guess I guess that sums it up. And again, my apologies for being less than articulate, but. Tax lower bit is good, but it's not that good.
All right, very well. Well. My opinion is definitely. The shape of the lot does. Meet the statue of a variance. But let me ask you a question. The by the our bylaw says fifty buffer or fifty feet erase. I mean, what's the setback to the fence, to the structure?
No, it that's an excellent question, and I I sort of hopped over that only because this is a point of disagreement between Long Road and the planning board. The setback is, okay, I guess what we can start. My reading of the. And I think I think the planning board agree i- is from the property boundary. The issue is that. Taking the front yard depth requirement as an example. That provision is five ninety four point one point three provides as follows. The front yard depth shall be in accordance with Article six of the zoning bylaw. Provided, however, that where the lot abuts or is across the street from a residential district or residential development, the front yard setback for all structures, including fencing and vegetated buffer, shall not be less than fifty feet. Maybe more, depending on the visibility of the facility, and it goes on. And each of these yard depth or setback requirements is more or less along those lines, and and our point is. We will concede, of course, this proposed project and the parcel is in a residential district, zoning districts in the R one thirty district. However. The lot does not abut a residential district, it's just in a residential district. It's not across the street from a residential district. It's in it, and it's certainly not across the street from any any residential development. The planning board says, you know, hey, you know, let's be reasonable here. Obviously, the bylaw is not meant to say residential district. It's meant to say. Across the street from a residential, residentially zoned parcel. And, you know, I guess as a. An attorney and therefore sort of a stickler for detail, it'd have to say, on the face of the bylaw, it's pretty clear that it says district, and if the, you know, if if town meeting wants to adopt. Bylaw provision that clarifies that. It can, but right now, you know, the word district is used specifically in many other portions of the bylaw. So that's a very long-winded answer to your question as to what the setback is from, but it's it's from the property boundary, but only under these specific circumstances. That are delineated in each of your three sections. So I think that I I did notice that Mr. Buckland is on the call, and perhaps he can vouch for this, but it it seems to me that we kind of. We in the planning board talked about this over some number of months and finally sort of. At least. Kind of agreed to disagree to consider it, perhaps to consider it a draw and for us to come before the ZBA for variance because the planning board acknowledged that while it did. Look favorably upon that that top figure showing, you know, that some buffer in in various areas around the property that. You know, it couldn't grant a waiver. The planning board can't waive substantive requirements. In fact, I'm not sure. I don't think this planning board can even waive submission requirements, which is, which is, you know, many planning boards can do. So here where they. Wanted to be able to agree to some setback slash vegetated buffer that was less than fifty feet. They're unable to do so because they don't have the authority. Under the bylaw to just to waive that requirement. And. I'll wrap this up, but let me just also point out. We are seeking a variance from the fifty foot setback slash vegetated buffer all the way around the property. However, we are not. Going to take the variance and then build out all the way to the property boundary. The 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 figure on top, on the top of your screen here, which which shows, you know, a twenty five foot vegetated buffer along the southern boundary of the municipal maintenance facility. A thirty foot buffer, new buffer bolstering existing vegetation along the eastern boundary of the municipal maintenance facility. We, oh, and then also a twenty five foot buffer to to sort of bolster the the vegetation that is currently exists within the state highway layout. We we are committing to to having those setbacks slash vegetated bumpers. So it it mean we're we're not just saying. You know, this doesn't apply. We're just gonna, we're gonna, it's gonna build on every square inch of the property. We recognize that the town doesn't want to have to be looking at this from the municipal maintenance facility. Chairman King for the planning board was very clear that passersby on on Route twenty five shouldn't necessarily have to see it and and noted that. The the Blue Wave parcel further to the east. Is has got. A buffer in addition to the state highway layout buffer. And and there actually. One more point, and then I will be quiet. Sarah, can you pull up the second page of the? The. Yes. So one comment that. Or one one idea that. The planning board's peer reviewer put forward and and pushed a bit during these discussions, and some of the board members also raised the question. You know. Why? Why is this a big deal? What we what what what? What? Why can't you? Why can't you just do it like the Blue Wave project or one of the four Blue Wave projects to the east did it? And by which I mean, you know, why can't you just put fifty foot buffers around your project sites the way Blue Wave did? And our response. Without any illustration was. Well, because the shape of this parcel really won't allow us to build the project and also have those fifty foot buffers, whereas the shapes of. The the four different Blue Wave parcel or Blue Wave project sites, and in fact, the layouts of those projects are much more uniform. They're not quite as perfect as this rectangle that Sarah's pulled up here, but. They are much, they were much more easily able to to not have to fight the buffer or the fifty foot setback requirement because they could have the same size parcel, twenty two point four acre parcel, like ours is. In, you know, this sort of very standard shape, and they could both have fifty foot setbacks and still have nine hundred and eighty two panels. Whereas we, because of the shape of the parcel on which we're building, if we were to have the fifty foot setback imposed, would. Only be able to to install the, you know, roughly six hundred panels. So. Again, I mean, that's, you know, more than a third less, and I me perhaps Haley can explain this better than I if if you wish, but. The impact on number of panels goes directly to. Generating capacity of of the facility, you know, electric power generating capacity of the facility, which goes to financial viability of the project. So. I mean, I I think that just. Is sort of an effort to to show, you know, the loss. That that would be caused by. The fifty foot buffer on this particular parcel.
All right, thank you, Consul. We'll get the message.
Yeah, sorry. No comments at this time.
Jimmy, what what are you?
Who owns, what what's the land? I know where the municipal maintenance department is. I know where the high is. I know where the cranberry box is. What's that treeed land? Yes, I'd call it north of the narrowest portion there with the.
Where?
Town owned property?
That's town owned property as well, yes. You mean to the basically to the north or to on the figure to the right of the municipal maintenance facility?
There might, there might be a little sliver that is another third party, but it's it's pretty minor, but it's largely up up there. It's largely town.
And so if that's north, south, east, and west, if we call the top of that screen north.
Okay.
Truly north is.
Yeah.
Okay, so then the western west is owned by the town, and the northern portion is also owned by the town, or?
Yeah, if you can see the little hand that Sarah has there, that, yeah, that's all town land.
Okay.
Correct.
So north and west.
Uh, correct.
And then east is the property owner that's that this is being built on.
East of of this parcel. Sure, it's it's all. Sure, sure, it's all, it's cranberry bogs. And, you know, sort of service areas for the cranberry box, but that's owned by Sher Cran.
Okay, so it's never going to be a budding, it's never going to be. Plus the town decides for housing there, it's never going to be in somebody's backyard.
Exactly, exactly.
And I don't see it being a problem. I have no further questions.
Well, I'm going to start out for the wildlife. There's not a lot of concern for the wildlife. There's already two huge solar fields that are up there that are not shown on any of these prints. Secondly, there's a corridor, well, not secondly, along with the wildlife. That 495 that runs up there, that 50 foot boundary needs to be there. Because there's a corridor for those deer or animals, coyotes, whatever you like, need to get through there. By that, they're going to cut it right off. And I don't understand why there's no activists here looking out for the wildlife and all these solar panels are going up. Secondly, I didn't understand what. She made a, I couldn't understand her when she said that developed the landowner was going to look for something else if this wasn't going to go through. I believe Mr. Fletcher's done all right owning that piece of property. Don't feel that he's going to be hurting in any way if this doesn't go through. Taxes. I don't understand why that could be thrown in our face about making a decision when we'll get taxes some way or another. And all in all, I just. I don't, I don't feel that we should give. Any variance. To the 50 foot setback at all in this situation. I'm familiar with the wildlife. I know where they run, they're just going to run out onto 495, hit somebody's car. God forbid, it's one of you that are building it and you get hit by a deer runs into you and you get killed. So I do not believe that this is a very good spot, a good spot at all for electrical panel. And that's my views on this.
Okay, you view it on electric panel period or just the setback?
And the setbacks.
Panel, it's okay with the.
I'm, I'm, I think Wareham owns enough electrical fields. And we're already putting up with one that's going to take a bunch of beautiful land up on Farron Hill Road, which I'm not a big fan of, but. I'm not in, I'm not in favor of giving them a variance on the 50 foot boundary.
Okay, Troy.
I don't have any comments.
All right. Let's go to the public, who wants to speak in favor of this project? Against? Okay, one other time, please. Whoever like first?
Good evening. My name is Barry Cosgrove. Hope you're patient with me.
Put it a little louder, please.
Barry Cosgrove?
Yes. Thank you very much for your volunteer service to the town.
And who will present, yourself or?
Myself and 15 other Wareham residents and I have their names and letters right here to present to you, so I'm going to try to convince 15 people's comments as simple as I can. We urge that this variance request be denied. You know, better than anyone, the elements that have to be proven, you get a variance, you can't prove one, you can't prove two, you got to prove them all. Well, I apologize. Is that better? Okay, I beg your pardon. First of all. Astonishingly. What the petitioner is asking you to do. Is to say that we have a very valuable setback requirement. From abutting lots in a residential area. But they're saying it doesn't apply because your abutting lots are in the same zone. Which is like saying you take a pizza out of the oven. All the slices are side by side in a budding. But just because you put them in the same box, now all of a sudden they're not abutting. Earlier. One of your members made the point about opening Pandora's box. Imagine what's going to happen. When somebody gets the hand on a decision that says, oh, there's a setback requirement related to a budding lots, but if we're in the same district, it doesn't apply. It's in collision with common sense. The 50 foot setback is there for a reason. The notion is that you don't want an industrial application too close to residential lots. And what's proposed here would nullify this pivotal town bylaw and it would arm, going back to Pandora's box, it would arm every solar applicant. With the precedent to come in and say, no more 50 foot setback for anybody. This would substantially derogate the purpose. Of the bylaw. And the eligibility for a variance requires proof that it would not substantially derogate the intent or purpose of a bylaw. Also, the gentleman made the point about the setback from Route 25. I guess it's 495, I still call it 25. Because of forest life, wildlife. Anybody who's driven north on that road knows the sun in your eyes in that section is brutal. Year out. It's brutal. Now you're going to add solar panel glare right off that highway to the equation. And then there's an exit right there, as you know, you want to exit to get on 195. This would be a substantial risk. Second, the question is, does the desired relief cause substantial detriment to the public good? If you look at the map here. The question was asked, who owns the land? The town owns the land. So what if the town wants to subdivide those lots if they can and develop them and try to sell them? How are you going to sell those lots with an industrial scale? Solar facility within 10 to 25 feet? The public good is not served by allowing uses that would devalue town assets. Additionally, the public good is not served by granting a favorable variance to a property with a check in history. This applicant submitted its materials to the conservation commission. Seeking just as I hear, the ability to shoehorn as many panels in as they can. They abandoned that application. The conservation commission is now investigating this applicant, this property. For violations of the buffer zone. And in this submission at Exhibit A, you'll see documentation of such. In addition, this property is on the list of the properties the town is evaluating for violations of earth removal. Additionally, this property was a subject of a dispute with the town alleging that the town property had been invaded for sand mining purposes and resulted in economic settlement. What public good? A requirement for variance is served by giving variances to properties that are under not one but two ongoing investigations. Finally, I appreciate your patience. The next requirement is that the enforcement of the bylaw will cause the applicant. To suffer substantial hardship, including financial hardship. So the point was correct, it doesn't matter about the property owner, doesn't matter about the taxpayers, doesn't matter about the town, the applicant. And hardship to an applicant is not getting what they want. Hardship is not getting your best case. Hardship is not winning the lottery. Hardship has to be proven that there's an economic proof. That the project they wanted. Is not economic if they have to play by the setback rules. And the point is, they've known about the shape of this lot for years. They had every opportunity to zone around it and they were basically betting the farm on a variance. And where's the cash flow statement? Where's the balance sheet? Where's the P and L? Where's the capex budget? Where's the proof? If I come in here and tell you, I'm, you know, I'm going to not make money or lose money, so shouldn't I have to prove that? Not just say it? In fact, the only numbers you were given is if they played by the rules that have 75% of the panels they want. Not too bad.
Excuse me, sir, how many, how many people did you say you had letters from?
15.
15, thank you.
The petitioner's miscalculations should not be remedied by this board being pressured to solve their problem. The petitioner's variance application fails all of the required tests. And we respectfully request that it be denied. Would you like me to name the residents for the record here or is it a little? Barry Cosgrove, England Valdez, Allison Stewart, Jeanne Lennon, Mike Lennon, Mr. and Mrs. George Ekman, Pibony Cortez, Karina War, Mary Horahan, Jay and Cal Conley, Paul Horahan, Annie Hayes and Rick Pack. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Here's these letters.
Man, man, that's going to be end to the file.
Yes, please.
Just to answer a couple of things before you go, sir. I totally understand what you're saying. Earth removal violation, this is not our jurisdiction, that'll be with the selectmen, that has nothing to do with us, as there's a violation, also conservation violation, there's issue has nothing to do with us. I mean, if they have a problem, they have to stop them. So we cannot take in consideration, this is strictly zoning. So that could be all underwater according to zoning, you could do it. But when he goes to conservation, it'll be denied. So we have no jurisdiction over them and they don't have jurisdiction over us. And to go back to a variance, you're saying there's no hardship. I, that's my personal opinion, I think they have the perfect hardship is the shape of the law. That's a perfect hardship. Now, that meets the statutory requirement of MGL 40A, Chapter 10, shape of the law. And I don't personally, again, I speak for myself, I don't believe it's detrimental to the neighborhood because there's no neighborhood. That's my opinion. Sure, I'll give, I'll, I'll give you a rebuttal, but let's go back again to the board and ask. Let me, let me answer, you answer me.
Yes. Sure, I understand both your points very well. But as a practical matter, what does it say about our town?
I want, I want to talk legal, let's go legal terms.
Okay, and then a second point on it being narrow in the middle, then seek a variance for the narrow spot in the middle, not the rest of the 26 acres. They're trying to get it all. So I agree with you, it's a very awkward shaped lot, which they knew. From the start. So in fairness to the town, shouldn't the variance be sought for that skinny portion where it becomes difficult? And not for the whole thing, which is what they're seeking. And that I think is the distinction because the shape of the lot is a criteria, but to have one part of a lot be problematic shouldn't give you the green light to be able to have a variance for the, for the other 26 acres approximately.
That's, that's, that's an, everybody has a preference on that and opinion. I understand what you're saying, but I speak for myself only, we'll see what the board thinks. You want to answer this gentleman, wanting to anything? You want to say anything?
When it, when it comes to a hardship. I don't think it's a hardship as well because they're still able to put a solar field, just not as many panels as they want. It's not like they have a lot that they, you know, are trying to put a house on so we allow setbacks so that they can get the house on the lot. They're doing what they want, they just want more. So to me, that's not a hardship.
Jimmy.
So. I've got a couple of things rolling through my head. I, I, I heard the bit about the setback on the narrow part. I also heard my fellow board member talk about the wildlife. And he used a term, something about a path or so. That's influencing my thinking, I guess is all I can say. I personally am. An advocate of solar panels, I think we could, I'd like to see as many squeezed in as many places as possible, just because I think it's a step in the right direction. Kind of moot to this application. So maybe there is a middle ground here is all I'm saying that I don't, I don't know that we want to kill the project, but I don't know that they need to get 100% of what they're asking for at this point.
Remember, we've told you 75% of the project fits without the variance, so I don't see how you'd be killing the project.
I want to make sure we have. If I may, oh, Bailey, please go ahead.
Constantly, you gotta wait a minute. So.
Okay.
Want to answer the gentleman?
Oh, I'm on his side.
Okay.
I, I tend to agree with Veronica and with Rich. I, I really have an issue with, we have the, we just did this whole bylaw thing for the zone. Solar for a reason. And if we keep changing it. I don't want to see more people coming before us looking for something that they don't really need.
I totally understand, however, this, the bylaw was done quick, it was done unfair. And we have, we have, you have to pick something. I always say in solar panel, you have to pick something. If you don't want fossil fuel, you gotta take the trees. If you don't want gas, you, you, you have to do solar panels, you can't have the pie and eat it.
I want gas and I want.
You want them both.
I want it all.
I want a hybrid.
But I think everybody get a shot at it, why is just electric?
I, I, I love, believe me, I love gas too, but whoever writes the.
Vehicle, I don't. That won't.
I know, me too, but.
All right, then.
Right, I, and I don't like electric vehicle myself either, but what I'm trying to say, whoever writes the bylaw, if you want to call it three huggers, I admit I'm not one. They want the trees and they don't want fossil fuel. So how are you going to achieve this? If you notice now the federal government just passed a massive law.
If you even open an airplane and you flew over this area and you looked at the amount of open space wide open where you wouldn't have to cut down one branch, let alone trees, and put in all sorts of solar panels, this is as good an area as any place on the planet to do that, but instead we're doing the opposite. I didn't come to debate solar or non-solar, I came to address this application.
Okay.
And, and your point about the solar bylaw being rushed, hurry, let's not let there be any mistake. This solar bylaw that's applicable here has been around for a long time. This isn't the one that's waiting for approval or not. This has been around for a long time and very smart people for some reason said, hey, look, 50 foot is right for this.
Well, I, I disagree, I think the people who wrote the bylaw were very unprofessional. I went to that panel and they were very, but that's besides the point. It is a bylaw and I agree with that and we're not going to argue about it. Right. However. Why do you think the shape of the lot does not dictate a hardship?
Because the law is very clear, that's one criteria, but it's all the other ones as well.
And a criteria for passage and a total of the whole project, it's, it, the hardship he has, the shape of the law would create a financial hardship because as the attorney described, if that parcel was perfectly shaped, he could fit more panels. So the shape of the law, it does the.
Very, very.
And, and if I may, it's not about him making money or her, I don't know who owns it, making more money or Mr. Fletcher, he's mentioned his name, making more money or less money. The law says if it's shape of the law makes a hardship and dictates financial hardship, it is a hardship. Because that shape makes, it creates a hardship.
So the law.
Whether he makes a dollar or a million, this is not our problem.
So the law says there are three or more criteria that have to be met. So even if we would agree that despite they knew it for years and they could have planned around it and they could have addressed that funky shape in the middle, even if we agree on that, there are other tests that have to be met.
Okay, the other test is that unique, I think it's unique, it's behind the TPW. Is it detrimental to the neighborhood? No, there's no neighborhood. Now, I agree with Mr. Sample about the setback on the highway, but what's the difference if you have a fence at 30 feet or at 50? If a deer going to cross, it's still not going to be able to cross if you go by what's, what the player, what, without the variance. So it's not, it's not gonna be able to cross.
Well, my, my, my point was is that the deer will go out onto the highway.
Yeah, correctly, but.
And then walk in and run into somebody which is the public and that's public safety.
I, I understand, but what's the difference?
That's the difference. That's the difference. It's, it's more room for him to go.
Okay, that's, that's your opinion. Anything would like to add, sir?
Oh, I just, I just would like to say that I know that this is a difficult job you have and I, as a citizen and all the other citizens here, we appreciate your service very much.
Thank you. Thank you. So where are the people who want to talk? Anna, you want to come forward? Which two?
Jim and Nasa.
Me and myself. Me being forward. All right, ma'am, would you like to come forward? Is that better, Bob? Okay, sorry.
Keep Bob happy. They're slow learners, Bob.
Oh, oh. Gotcha, that's. All right, ma'am.
Let's, let's try the mic. My name is Annie Hayes. I live on 52 Farmer's Lane. Is that good, the mic?
Yes.
Good? Okay.
Farmer's Lane is?
West Wareham.
West Wareham, yes.
Yeah, on the backside of Ferring Hill. And first I want to thank you for, um, speaking for wildlife. And to your concern or your question about where do we put the solar? I've put three, um, sets of panels on rooftops and I love them. They're great. But I wouldn't cut down the forests I have, um, or on my land, the trees on my land. I plant trees so that we can have both. And if we keep doing projects that cut down the forests, then there's no incentive to do it where it's right. And I want to say that when I first started learning about solar on large scale developments, I would have looked at that site with the sand thinking, of course, it must be a quarry of some sort, sand mining, and that that's the degraded land that we're talking about putting solar on. But I've learned a lot since then. And I know buffers are not only to have visual screening, but to protect the adjacent land. And I am also concerned because there's been mining there and it's down to sand. The word buffer, now this may not be your domain, but the buffer between the aquifer and whatever is on that sand, the solar panels, is gone. The forest was the buffer. The forest is the perfect buffer for our water and we better do something about our water because it's becoming more and more vulnerable. And sand permeates, you know, a kid on sand pours a bucket of water, it disappears. It just goes right through and it goes to the water, the aquifer. And we're very fortunate to have it. It's our sole source of water for, I think, what, 80% of the town. So just imagine, and we had a little bit of a taste of it. We had a drought and that drought affected the aquifer. There's a person on the, um, select board in Carver I was speaking to. Back in 2016, they had a well that was dry and they didn't have anything to compensate. What did they do? He said they crossed their fingers and hope the public wouldn't notice. Lots of issues. So let me talk about why I'm concerned about what's on that sand. This, I understand, is a First Solar, solar panel project. Is that correct?
Uh, at this point, that's what's planned, yep.
And First Solar has cadmium telluride as its semiconductor. A person that represented First Solar, um, which is used because it's in, it's not an expensive process. It, the materials are getting, are, are rare. But, um, the cadmium comes as a byproduct for, for another, um, uh, process. But, um, the, the guy who was representing First Solar, the doctor chemist, said that it has low solubility. It doesn't, it's not solu-, it's not easily soluble. And he was trying to convince people in the desert, where they're putting in a 3.7 million cadmium telluride project. And the people wouldn't have it because cadmium is one of the six most toxic metals there is. So this fellow, the chemist for First Solar said it is impossible, nearly impossible. It's very difficult to separate the cadmium, the telluride, so that it could leach out. And besides, it's very nicely sealed in. Well, so since that time in 2012, there are many studies and I have two here that I'll leave with you. One is by the University of Stuttgart Institute for Photovoltaics and the Institute for Sanitary Engineering, Water Quality, et cetera, also Stuttgart. This was done in 2015. Another one is done in 2017. But they both point to the solubility of cadmium telluride and the ability of it to leach out of panels. And they didn't do the one day test, which had been typical. They did, um, the three month test. There's one that I, I know of that did a, a year test. Because these things are gonna be there for how many years? 25 at least? I don't know if there are any renewal of the lease in, in this project. They're gonna be there a long time and we know that the weather's becoming more extreme. You have 105 degrees and then you have minus 10. And this is just a human sealant around these panels. You know, it, it, it's manmade. The back sheets are also vulnerable. And when the back sheet starts to have UV breakdown, it can crack and precipitation can get in and there can be leachate of that cadmium telluride. And it can go right into the aquifer. So we're talking about a perimeter buffer. I'm talking about a base buffer. And I think we have to start talking about that more. It is so critical to our survival.
Well, with all due respect, ma'am, this is not the place to talk about this.
I know.
We want to stick with zoning here.
Let me do one more thing about zoning. I have some acreage. What is going to stop me from making a lot that's something like that shape on my acreage? I'm in a place where maybe the neighbors won't see if there's only 10 feet if I get the variance that I want because it's gonna be a hardship for me if I don't get that variance. I'm not gonna be able to put the panels where I want. Because I want it to go around the barn or around the wetland or around the this or around the that. What is going to stop this variance from coming back to haunt you and all of us? Why isn't that a hardship for me if I can't get what I want?
Well, right now we've, what's before us is what's before us. I don't know what's coming tomorrow or next month or what can a plan you have or plan to have. So this is not what's before us.
I understand. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am.
Anyone else?
Thought I saw another hand. Yeah, come on up, sir.
Name and address, please.
My name is David Fletcher. I'm the, the property owner of the discussed parcel. And I heard, just to clarify a couple of things on the hardship. Barry said it wasn't a hardship because it was only a hardship to the applicant. Well, that is somewhat untrue because it is a hardship to me as the landowner. You know, not to sound like a crybaby, but I work my fingers to the bone every day. Uh, my, I've been doing it for.
Let me stop you, Mr. Fletcher. The hardship is not for a person. It's for a land.
Right.
Just, it just happened that I am apparently on your side and your land does have hardship that has nothing to do with you.
Okay, well, I misunderstood.
Not about the person.
Okay.
So whatever you want to say about the property, we talk about the property.
Okay. I, I wanted to make a couple of other clarifications about the property as well. Nobody mentioned this, but the property where the solar panels is gonna sit, is quite a bit lower than the surrounding land. So it's not visible. You know, even if the town would have cleared, um, that area that's between Charge Pond Road and the, the solar array itself, nobody would ever see the solar array because the solar panels only sit eight feet above the ground. And, uh, the land is about eight feet lower or 10 feet lower than the, the mean average grade of the surrounding properties. It would only be visible from the Sherracram property, which is at about the same level on that side. On the highway side with, with respect to the wildlife, there's a fence that runs along the state highway, uh, bound, the state highway layout already. So the deer can't go over or under that fence. And that's been there since the 1960s when they built the highway. So I don't think it's, it's gonna change the path of the wildlife in that respect because they can't get.
How tall is that fence?
It's, it's probably about six feet tall.
I, I will beg to differ. I could go out there and measure it for you and I do not believe that it's six feet tall.
Well, it's, 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 it's high enough where.
Just, just for the record, I'm pretty much sure that a deer could jump right over that. So if you want to contain a deer, you need to go at least 12 feet.
Yeah.
So, so that fence over there.
Well, apparently the state put it for a reason, but anyway, we, we don't. Anyway, so that is a fence.
Right. So I, I just wanted to bring that clarification, not that it, it probably matters any, but it was just, uh, you know, and I heard it mention the wildlife. I said to myself.
Wildlife is also the people driving 16, 80 miles an hour down there. That's kind of wildlife.
Oh, I'm sure. The other thing about the parcel is that section that does about, about the state highway is quite a bit higher than the layout of the road. By about 15 to anywhere between 10 and 20 feet. So, you know, i- if the buffer were to be reduced on that side, it's not visible from two passersby's on the highway either way because it's above their heads. The most, the, the vast majority of that line of panels would be above the, the elevation of the roofs of their cars. So.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Well.
Thanks for your comments.
Again, uh, I guess, yeah, anyone else? I hear none. So I guess that's mixed feelings here. So I think we should sleep on it. Think about it and come back.
I see somebody with their finger up on the screen.
Yes.
And, yes, counselor, make it quick, please.
Oh, absolutely. Uh, just, uh, that we're talking about a dimensional variance here, not a use variance. And the standard for dimensional variance is, uh, is, is lower, is a, is even, even a relatively minor hardship can justify a variance. So hardship, if the project only needs to become economically impractical, not impossible. Because this is dimensional variance that we're seeking, not a use variance in addition. Betsy Aljebin, if I may. Am I able to speak? Yeah, I just wanted to comment that we aren't even the top design, which has been a result of many months of going back and forth with the planning board. Is not what we, is not our perfect world. Um, it's an agreed upon, nearly agreed upon with the planning board world where they've said, yeah, this makes sense to us. We understand why this is here, why you're saying that there, you know. So just as far from like a pure comparison perspective, this, it's not our perfect world versus the, the worst, you know, the, the worst case world. This is the kind of middle ground, just for folks that said like, oh, well, 25% less panels, no big deal. It's probably more like 50% if we got our perfect world scenario versus, you know, worst case. I just wanted to make that point.
Before we, um, this, I couldn't send Buck, he might be online. He's been on the, with.
Kenny, you there? You want to say something? I guess he's not.
Mr. Buck, are you on Zoom?
There he is.
Yeah, I'm here.
Would you like to comment?
Uh, only that the planning board hasn't made a decision yet, so they're still in, still considering the application. Uh, one of the things they had to do though was to have this variance, uh, approved before they, uh, were to finalize their, uh, consideration for the current plan. It's that you see there before you.
Uh, very good. Thank you. Well, I have to say something, maybe, maybe I shouldn't, but unfortunately this applicant paying for a penalty for Ferring Hill project because everybody against Ferring Hill project, which I agree as well. I went to that board who did that by law and I suggested not to go in R60 or R45 or R30. Be on a district such like this one and bogs that would fit this criteria. For some reason, somebody liked the R60 and the R45. And which is, I totally disagree against it. I disagree in industrial park because it's taken our residential land and taken our industrial rent. Parcel like this, very hard to be residential. So this is the perfect location for, for panels if you want to meet halfway. So I wanted to say you're getting penalized because Ferring Hill project, which is, Ferring Hill project is a very bad project. And, and the land trust, I believe, some trust wanted to buy this project and the owner was dispirited, didn't want to sell it to them. And he was, they were giving them full price. I was surprised. They were giving them full price. I think, and, and I think this project should be denied because he was getting what he wants from the, from the, from committee, I don't know whether it is wildland trust, open space. And, uh, the guy didn't want to sell it. So this gentleman getting penalized because Ferring Hill project. But that being said, let's get a motion to continue.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
I have a motion to continue till the 28th. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by throw your favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pause, abstain. Denied?
She, yes.
You don't want to continue?
She doesn't want to continue.
Okay. All right. So it's continued.
Continued.
All right, we'll see you on the 28th.
Thank you very much.
Give us guys a minute to jump on the second one, take some notes. All right, let's get back. All these plans here. You?
Yep. I think it's one to get.
All right, uh, next continue public hearing, 29 dash 22 Joshua DeOle, special firm on Cranberry Highway.
Good evening, folks. My name is Robert Perry and I represent the applicant here.
Good evening.
Your name, sir?
Joshua DeOle.
Good, very well. That's, I guess the, the note has been read into record last time, Counselor, right?
The last, the original time in, I was down with COVID again this year, second time. And you were kind enough to continue this for me.
Thank you.
Getting both sides of the, uh.
Is that the letter from Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Okay.
Taking it off and have a chance to have it in their hand.
I, I don't disagree by any means. I, I agree with.
What are these index of exhibits? This over Mr. Sample. I don't know if they're diamonds. They're beneath, but I see things with their name on here. Veronica, we can just do this. There's no room for all that. As well make sure everybody gets what they're supposed to. Make my stack smaller anyway.
I have two.
I have two. Oh, Troy, I have yours. Has your name on the front.
Ah, okay.
Sample, we're all good.
All right, let's hear it again, so, all right.
All right, uh, before I begin, I do have a couple of additional photographs I'd like to to give you over tonight.
Okay, looks all the same.
And I will show it to you earlier. I'd like to.
Oh, okay, this one is too. Yeah, two complaints.
Thank you. Can't speak, you'll get yelled at for not speaking into the microphone.
Thank you.
Photographs are in addition to the photographs that I gave you with the original application. And I give them to you because I want to let you see what my client has been doing. To improve the property and to create a buffer. He's looking, he's a young man in business, very small business. And automotive business, and he's looking for a special permit as required under the bylaw. In order to conduct this business. At the property he purchased a little year, little over a year ago, twenty-six eighteen Cranberry Highway. He has tow trucks. He does towing on a small scale. Two ways, one for customers. And one for himself. He bought, he will buy a vehicle, bring it back and uh. End up pretty much junking them at a higher price than he bought them for. He will, he also ends up like all tow companies. With vehicles that he gets called to tow and they just never get picked up. So so he's stuck with those also. He has put in a buffer zone. He's only looking for nine vehicles. He needs a special permit in order to properly operate. And he needs. Should have a class two license there, even a one vehicle license, simply so that he can sell off vehicles. That he no longer has a use for. Uh, I don't think this thing is detrimental to the neighborhood at all. It seems that this this neighborhood is our Wayhams auto mile. We've got Wayham Ford, we've got Manny D Miranda Discount Auto, we've got uh.
Robinsons.
Robinsons. So I mean, it's it's probably the best place in town to have something like this. And, you know, it's not hurting anybody other than perhaps Mr. Conti feels he's being hurt by it. Um, you have a an extensive letter from Mr. Conti. I've looked it over. Some of the things don't even make sense. They don't seem to have anything to do with my client's business or what he wants to do there. Or what he's able to do there. So I I think I've kind of spelled it out in the application. I think, you know, it it's getting late. It's past my bedtime, probably past yours too. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them, but I I think the application pretty well tells what we're looking for.
All right, so how many bays that garage is?
Garage is basically two bays, it looks like to me, and an office.
This this garage.
And that was on the property when he bought it. Well, what are you looking at? We we did give you a picture of of a garage on his property that was there when he bought the property.
Right. Okay, so you live in the property and you have a garage and you want to do mechanic and towing? Or just towing?
Well, it's to do mechanics, uh, primarily towing.
Primarily towing mechanic would just be, you know, on my own tow trucks and vehicles that I buy. I'm not really doing.
Primary business is towing?
Yes.
And Mr. Conti points out, his father is right next door. And has operated for probably twenty years, a repair facility next door.
All right, but let me let me narrate again.
Go ahead.
Primary business is towing.
Yes.
Towing and concern on a strip commercial is not allowed. It's only allowed in residential and industrial. It's not allowed use. You're gonna need a variance. They're asking for a special permit.
Asking for a special permit.
But the towing is only allowed industrials on.
Let me ask you, can I amend the petition and we republish?
You gotta republish it.
Yeah, I don't have a problem republishing. I don't want to refile it because it's it's commercial and it's a lot of money out of the pocket, the pocket.
I understand.
I don't have a problem whatsoever with amending the petition. And, you know, republishing, we, I think we publish in a way a week.
Can somebody look at the bylaw, just make sure I'm right?
Because I'm relying on you. I didn't think so. And I didn't bring my bylaw. We're not looking for junkyard. We're not looking for salvage.
It's currently zoned. For commercial.
Yes. I believe that would be motor vehicle service.
Say it again, uh, Ken.
I I thought it was myself. I mean, I thought.
I believe that's motor vehicle service, which is a special permit from the zoning board in the commercial strip and the and the CG, the commercial general district as well.
Yes, Ken, I understand. That's why I narrated. He wants primarily towing, not auto repair. So that's why I narrated in the question twice. Auto repair is allowed use. But uh, towing is for industrial park only.
Towing is separately listed on here?
Yeah. Motor vehicle service. Well, unfortunately, if more of a towing can come with the motor vehicle service. So if you have a garage, you could do towing.
Oh, do you think, do you think that perhaps we should be looking for mechanic work in the garage as well as the towing? As a sign, I mean, I I'd like to get him on an even keel. He's a young man who's working very hard. And uh, if if I read the bylaw incorrectly, I apologize.
Say you withdraw your your comment and you go back to a garage. How can you only fit nine cars for towing?
Yeah, you can. I mean, that's why, that's why I'm trying to represent it.
Okay, okay, counsel.
I have.
I have, I have a repair facility and I understand. How can you survive with the repair and towing with only nine cars? It just doesn't make sense. How can you only have nine cars? The picture's already here. You probably have nine cars.
Nine every day.
Yeah.
I move not nine in and out every day.
Sir, one other thing, I gotta give you the floor to speak. So when I let you speak, let the council finish.
He has to turn this stuff over, and he's able to, he's able to turn it over quickly.
I believe I will have no problem with it, but you're gonna have to come with a site plan review.
Well, only we can have more than nine.
Well, that's why you guys put nine, so you get away without type of site plan, because I believe it'd be a lot more than nine. So I will personally, that's my opinion around it by the board. I would like to see a site plan, especially there's also a resident on the property.
Mr. Chairman, they um.
One second, counselor. Yes, Ken.
The definition of motor vehicle service is is includes towing for service.
Correct, if it's motor vehicle service. That's why I asked the question twice. However, I'm gonna allow the counselor to withdraw his comment and go to motor vehicle service. Towing is only strictly if it's towing only for the industrial park, but I act, I'm, it's okay, I accept the withdrawal. But I believe it should be a site plan, needs a site plan review. I'm gonna pass by Veronica, I'll start asking questions. Veronica, what do you think?
I.
Just say one more thing first, though.
Yes, sir.
He commits to nine vehicles, then he's in violation if he has more. I mean, he he is saying, look. Number one, I can't afford something. It it's ridiculous for what I want to do there on my property. I don't have enough room to do an awful lot more than that. Well, I want to limit myself to nine vehicles. And I have to turn them over in and out quickly in order to make my living.
All right, let me, let me hear from the board and the public who go from there. So Veronica.
So so there's a residence on the property?
There is.
What's the requirement for parking for the residents?
I would say at most two cars.
Two?
Two cars per unit.
What is it? I'm sorry, Ken?
Two cars, two spaces per unit.
And there's one unit on the property?
One three bedroom house, that's two parking lot.
That would be two parking plus nine for the for the cars. And then are you gonna have any employees?
That's eleven right there. That that would trigger a site plan.
Well, the ones.
Two for the house, nine for the thing would trigger a night site plan. You eleven cars. He's absolutely right. Let me pass by Jim, we'll get back to you.
Go ahead.
Question. What is it that you do? Do you conduct cars? Like, if I wanted my car moved to Florida, would you do it? That's the type of towing you do. Are you a car mover or? Like, if I called AAA, are you gonna come pick up my car on the side of the road?
You told. I could.
But. Good, so you do. So then when you when you pick that up, where are you going?
The car that I'm towing, it uh to the to the customer's house.
Or you take it to their house?
Yeah, a lot of vehicles never even make it to the, you know, to the shop or the, you know.
It and and it's. That's what I'm trying to get at is what are you really doing there? Because I got a sense you're not. Like Max, or is it Max towing and Von's towing and this and that and everything in there? They're they're out there looking for disabled vehicles and yanking them back to a yard and filling the yard up with it. I got a sense that what you're doing is picking up vehicles for customers and moving them for customers. I got an unregistered vehicle. I want it moved to the garage. I got a car I want brought to Florida. I- is that more what you do?
That is, that is more what I do, yeah.
I know about the Florida part.
Well, maybe Florida is a bad example.
I wa- I got, I want it brought to Fall River, Rob. Or Rhode Island or whatever.
Yeah. Okay, well, I know that there's guys that did get five car carriers and they load them up and they bring them down because people. People want to fly down and have the.
He doesn't have five car carriers. You call him up and need a car moved, he'll move it anywhere within reason. I think that's what he does. He's not like Max. Max tied in with AAA. Finance by AAA and and that's his big business.
Richard, so.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I guess where we are is we're just stuck on whether we need a site plan review or not, and what I'm hearing, listening to everybody.
Okay, very well, Richard.
So I I believe like.
Sorry about that. I'm a beginner too, Bob. So. I get. So again, I I believe that the majority of the cars that are towed by AAA, like I I've used AAA quite a bit. They go to my mechanic or somewhere, and if they don't have a mechanic, they will take them to their place. So I guess in my view. Everything would be fine unless you had a busy night one night and you had three customers calling, needed three cars towed all in one night. Would you tell them? It's got to go to your house and then it can come to when I make room?
I would, I would definitely find ways to work around it. I'm not a twenty-four hour business, so I wouldn't keep doing work at night.
But you're 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 like.
One other time, one other time.
You're 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 in business and for customer calls.
Yep.
All right.
You'd go to help them. So I'm just, I guess I'm just reiterating the fact that. It not everybody takes the car back to the house, but there is, he's a mechanic. If they didn't have a mechanic and they needed help, then he could take it to his place. But again, so that would put them over the eleven, so site plan review, I think, is.
Let's go back to the subject. Okay. You you're discussing your business as mainly towing. So as the clerk asked you, so we go back to the same issue. Are you a repair service or you're a towing company? That's the question.
I mean, I have skills in all aspects of the automotive field, so I mean, I can do whatever you're, I'm permitted to do and work around. Whatever I need to work around. It's it's pretty simple for me.
All right, Troy, what do you think?
No questions at this time. Everybody seems to have gotten.
I'm gonna go to the public, but I'm I'm gonna make it clear for you. I'm I'm re- I'm looking at your pictures right here. You have over eleven, eleven vehicles already. Just in the back. If you do in a repair shop, you're gonna need site plan. If you do in towing service, you're not allowed to there with our variants. So that's that's the rules of the bylaw. Before we go forward, I'm gonna. Ask the public, anyone want to speak in favor of the project? In favor? Come forward.
One at a time.
One another time.
Make sure. Microphone, name, address.
Thanks for letting me speak, Chairman. My name's Kelsey Fagan. I live at Seven Hill Street, Buzzards Bay, Massachusetts. I really want to reiterate on the fact that this is a young man with good business ethics. Who is just trying to make a living for himself and his young family. Um, I've only witnessed Josh have good business practices. My Jeep has broke down many times during the day and he's been there to help me. Um, I've trust him with my motor vehicle. And he has aspirations as well as being um on the Wareham tow list. I mean, he's here to, you know, help the town out and has been a lifelong Wareham. Uh, citizen, resident, so. I really believe that this, you know, tow company will not be a harm to the, his neighbors, will not be a harm to the town. I mean, it's on a commercial strip with another um auto repair shop next door. Robinson's Car Dealership. And then again, it's just, you know, is is the town gonna be supportive of young people trying to make it a name for themselves? And really carve out their own niche, so. I think within our town too, we have huge players that are kind of in control of this business. And Josh could make a good impact, so. That's what I'd like to say. I'm in favor of it.
I have no doubt he's a great mechanic and a nice guy and everything, but special permit or variance, as I said before, it goes for the property, not for the person. It's the merit of the property. I'm sure he's a great, nice guy. He seems to be a fine gentleman. I'd like to help him. But the but there's merits for the project, but thank you for your comment.
Yeah, I I totally agree with you. I've worked on an assessing department for five years. I understand, but it is a commercial zone. And I believe that um its best rule in his favor, but that's just my.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next one in favor. Damon Addus, sir.
Excuse me. My name is Manuel Silva. I reside at twenty-six Osborne Ave, West Wayham, Massachusetts. I'd like to speak in favor of the petition. Uh, I don't see how it could possibly be any detriment to the neighborhood. The property to the right is commercial, the property to the left is commercial. And all around that general area, it's basically auto mechanic related services, so. You know, that's how I feel about it, and I think he should. Uh, approve his petition. Thank you.
Thank you. Some, who else in favor?
How you doing? I'm Antonio Deoleen.
Just get closer to the microphone, so it doesn't yell at us.
I'm Antonio Deoleen of twenty-six twenty Cranberry Highway. Josh is my son, who's my neighbor. I am his budding neighbor, and I am all for him trying to raise his family in this town like I did for the last thirty years. Raised three kids in this town. And they all live here and pay their taxes like I have, and he's trying to do and raise his family here and. Run a business in the town, just like I did.
Because I totally understand, I totally understand. Cause I totally understand, I totally understand. Thank you for your comment. Thank you. Who else wanna speak in favor? Now, ag- against, favor?
Still got in favors coming up.
Favor, sir, come through.
William Curtin, fifty-nine Parkwood Drive, Wareham. Uh, just wanna reindulate what everybody else is saying. I'm in favor of this project going forward.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in favor? Come forward, please.
Hello, Robert Leclerc, eleven Overlook Terrace. I've been turning wrenches in this town for thirty-five years and. Another mechanic, it's a good idea and.
And so you're in favor of the.
I'm in favor.
Thank you, sir. Who else in favor? Okay. Name and address. Yes, ma'am.
Mary Fagan, Seven Hill Street, Buzzards Bay. Um, I'm in favor of supporting Josh in the youth of Wareham.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Just put that mic next to you.
How you doing? My name is Gon Tabas. I live on seven thirteen Ave. Josh is a very, very good kid. My son Justin works for Josh a lot. He helps a lot, a lot of people and I hope he gets this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I'm sure he does help a lot of people. Uh, I, who else wanna speak in favor?
Hello, Brad Curtin, fifty-nine Parker Drive, Wareham. Uh, just reiterating in favor of Josh's business and. I've used him many times and he's helped me immensely and I believe he should be able to continue as he's doing, helping the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, anyone else in favor? That's the whole room. Yes, ma'am. Did his homework. Josh did his homework.
Janice Rounds, seven San Pablo Terrace. Just wanna say I'm in favor of Josh opening this business on the same strip. That a lot of businesses have done, doing the same thing. Thank you.
Ma'am?
Hi, Kiana Fons, forty-four old on Set Road. Just wanna say that I'm in favor of Josh's business and no additional comments beyond what anyone else has said.
Thank you, ma'am.
Stephanie Davis, seventeen Marks Cove Road. Um, I actually own a repair shop in Halifax, Mass. And I am very familiar with the business that is, his father does work for us and Josh has towed several vehicles to Halifax. Where we, um, and I'm very familiar with the property. Um, he's done immense improvements around that. And I mean, we all know this is the automobile. In this section and I think you should probably give him a fair shake. And I, and he turns cars around so fast because he's young, you know? So, good luck, Josh. Thank you.
Good luck. Thank you. Who else in favor?
Hi, Teresa Fons, forty-four on Set Road. And I just think you should give Josh a chance. He does a good job.
Thank you, ma'am.
Kerry Campina, sixty-four San Antonio, Wareham, MS. I'm all for Josh. I noticed like the start, you know, your own business and stuff, it takes a lot. And I, I believe every young man deserves that chance. So it's just, so I believe we should just give him that chance for him and his family. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Bill Youngson. I live at one fifty-two in the North Road. As being one of the vendors that Josh has called for for parts, I work at Advance Auto Parts. It's hard in this business nowadays to get kids that are growing up and going forward with what they're doing. He does show what he's doing to go forward and I believe he has. Like he is, he's trying to support his family further. He's been stand up for me and I'm in.
Thank you. Who else? Uh, who's?
I think he might have, might be setting a record here.
My name's Therese Leclerc, eleven Overlook East Wareham. And I think it's in a perfect spot for what he wants to do. I don't think it's an issue and uh, obviously he's got a lot of support from the town. And I just.
We definitely think it's in the perfect spot, in the right zone, but it needs. It needs work. You can just say, okay, this is a permit and start towing cars. But thank you for your comment.
Thank you, sir.
Who else? Now against?
Anybody here to speak?
Are you for or against? Yeah, please sit down. Name and address.
Brian Maturkey, five Holy Street Avenue, Wareham. I'm in favor of the towing business. Um, I think it's beneficial to the town and. I think he's doing it the right way. He's actually not trying to hide it from the town. He's going about it the right way, try to get permitted, try to get started. As a small business and just try to grow a business and try to make a dollar the correct way. So I support him. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, who else in favor? Now against? Against, come. But before we go against, again, Mr. Uh, Josh, last name, please. Diolam. Like I said, we definitely love to help. I mean, I was your age once, I was given a chance. But there's some rules and regs we have to follow at the minimum, the rules and regs. We can't just, just hand it like that. So let's hear it from the bar.
Christopher Conti, twenty-six fourteen, twenty-six, uh, sixteen Cranberry Highway.
Can you get a mic closer to you, Chris, please?
I'm a director, but uh, um, on the east side of the property, three hundred and sixty feet of our properties, um, about each other. Uh, I'm not sure if this, it seems like the application, uh, it also included that. Two properties would be using the special permit, twenty-six eighteen and twenty-six twenty. I was a little bit confused on. How the applicant can only can apply for two pieces of property. So in my letter, I sent the letter to the board. I don't know if you've all read it. Um, I can read it and go through my points if, if you'd like me to.
Well, I think we need to clear up the first comment.
Right. The application for twenty-six twenty and twenty-six eighteen or just twenty-six eighteen?
Twenty-six eighteen. I, I don't know how Mr. Conti came to that conclusion. If, if I made a mistake or something, I apologize. I don't think I did. I. I saw his letter before I came here tonight.
Your property's twenty-six eighteen. And what's this twenty-six twenty?
That's his father's property. That's a mechanic shop.
And that's not part of this application?
What's map one ten? You, are you, oh, you're lot one oh five one?
Yeah, they're both on the same map.
Okay. So it's definitely twenty-six eighteen?
Twenty-six eighteen.
Okay, because he said he's gonna utilize the permit with twenty-six twenty on one of the.
I think it says that.
The application.
If, if vehicles needed work, he would probably be towing it to his father's place.
Yeah, right. On this application, it says. So I was just a little bit curious about that because he does have an automotive business next door and they drive around through both properties. So they seem to be utilizing, you know, both of the properties. For the business, or for that business. So I guess my letter included twenty-six twenty. I mean, um. He is, father has an automotive business there since, as he mentioned, two thousand and seven, a long time. He doesn't have a special permit, which he, which he needs one.
Who are we talking about? We talking about?
Counselor, if you allow him to speak, then.
Well, but he's not speaking to my client's property without.
Okay, I'll speak on that property. There's many violations on that property, um, according to our bylaws. Uh, if we look at our bylaws, three twenty principal use, uh, motor vehicle service, a motor vehicle sales. Seems like they're operating a junkyard, a salvage yard. They have an illegal two-family dwelling. Uh, they have storage containers. Three fifty-one, multiple principal use, that requires a special permit in commercial, uh, strip. Junkyards aren't allowed with five hundred feet minimum. Uses prohibited, um. Destructive of our property values. They, I mean, they're over there vacuuming, pressure washing all the time on vehicles. They're spreading vehicles outside. Uh, without the proper facilities. They're selling vehicles with leaky tanks, uh, gas tanks. Three seventy-one, open a lot of storage of junk. Uh, five thirty, ungarage motor vehicles. I've seen as many as twenty vehicles on the property. Um, they need a variance for their two family. No Title V was done on the property since they bought it. Let's see. Do we really need another principal tow yard in our? Town? There's usually twelve.
Irrelevant.
There's usually twelve to twenty junk.
If I miss the criteria, they.
There's usually tw- twelve to twenty junk and used vehicles.
This is not a, I comment back, do we need, you said, do we need another tow? Company.
Right, I know.
That's irrelevant.
It is irrelevant. They have twelve to twenty, um, junk vehicles packed in the ad. They had four flatbed tow, tow vehicles. Two of them they removed from the property. Um, he's got his employees, uh, packed, uh, vehicles and now a multi-family. So I would definitely say this requires Article fifteen, a site plan review. Uh, the safety issues with tow trucks entering in and out, um, onto Cranberry Highway. They always seem to drive on the curb. I don't think their, their curbs are. Um, they have enough roundness for a tow flatbed tow truck plus a tow behind vehicle onto that. Um, I attached some pictures. I don't know if you saw them. There's always stopped in front of my house. Uh, I have people pulling in my driveway. There's tow trucks always on the side there. They're loading, uh, vehicles and that he sells or people there. I think it's unsafe for Cranberry Highway there. There's a safety issue. Um, I don't like the salvage yard. Business, which I think I showed you a bunch of pictures with that. There's also, uh, Facebook Marketplace ads saying, you know. Tell me what you need, I'll pull it off a vehicle and sell it to you. According to our bylaws, uh, fourteen sixty-one, the Board of Appeals. Board of Appeals shall not approve any application for a special permit unless it's signed that in judgment, all of the following conditions are met. One is the use as developed would not adversely affect the neighborhood. This tow business junk salvage yard. Definitely affects my neighborhood in a negative manner. The specific site is appropriate for such use or structures. This is not an appropriate location, especially with all the surrounding residential homes. Uh, no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicle or pedestrians. As I said, they're going in and out of Cranberry Highway. There's, you know, bound to be. An accident sooner or later. Adequate and appropriate facilities. There, the building that they have there, I don't even think they can, uh, pull a car in, into each, uh, each one of those bays, any one of those bays. That's why they're working all outside. It is detrimental to my neighborhood. Definitely make my property's value go down. I, you know, I, he's probably a great guy and all that. Um, I have no problems with have, him doing something that is allowed. In our area. Um, but I would ask the board to deny this special permit. And if you do wish to consider the application, I would definitely like to see a site plan review. And I guess that's, that's my point.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Anyone against?
Anybody else opposed that wants to speak?
All right. You wanna comment, counselor?
Well, I mean, I've gone through Mr. Conti's pictures. He's got pictures here that don't even make sense. They don't seem to apply. He's got a picture, for example, I've got in front of me right now, of some tow truck, not my client, in his driveway. They're turning around and saying, I don't know what they're doing.
That's, I understand. That's. That's relevant to the application.
Some pickup truck parked out in Cranberry Highway down, down.
Veronica, thank you, Con. What you wishes?
Um, I think, um, you know, as you had said, you know, site plan review is. Definitely, um, the other thing is, uh, Mr. Conti did bring up some points, um, and in the past when. Points are made about, um, non-conformity and doing things, um. That have, haven't been approved. We do look at that, what, before approving an application. So those are some things I think that need to be addressed. But other than that, I don't have any comment at this time.
Jimmy?
I'm thinking I keep hearing the word site plan review. When we say site plan review. Are we talking about a full-blown, um, engineered, drawn and planted property and. Lighting and landscaping and drainage and, uh, curb cuts and.
The whole nine yards.
What's he gotta do to avoid that? That's a huge cost for a little operation like his.
It sounds like as long as I'm under the limit.
Get the microphone, so you, so.
Sounds like as long as I'm under the limited vehicles, I'd be okay.
But you're not under the limit.
But I can be.
Yeah, so you gotta cut to seven?
I mean, that sounds like the only issue.
Working with? That's what I was gonna ask you.
I mean.
I didn't think the two vehicles for the house, registered vehicles, counted in what we're doing on a special permit. Under, as I read the bylaw. I may have read it wrong, you know, you're more an expert now than I am.
All right. We could pull a vote if you wish, but let me finish with the board. Rich?
Well, I do believe I'm on Veronica's side as far as he making a record on how many people came in for one project. But I did hear everybody saying that he's a great mechanic. I didn't hear anything about towing, towing, towing. So he's here for towing. He's probably a top-notch mechanic. I have not met him. Um, hopefully someday he'll help me out, but all I heard was mechanics. So again, he's here for towing. Sounds like he's gonna be doing both.
Troy?
I agree, um. Is there any way to enforce the stipulation of how many cars he has there? I mean, how would we enforce something like that? Other than site plan review?
Well, site plan, you're still gonna end up with a maximum number of cars, which you could violate. I've got cases in other towns with facilities similar to this. And, and, you know, the building inspector stops out, uh, monthly at random and, and checks them.
Can I make a, uh, I'd like to make a suggestion to you. I, you. Look at it this way, by doing a site plan review, you can add a lot more cars legally. You're trying, you, you're limiting yourself and where your business can go with this presentation you put before us to try and kind of slide under. If you do it how we're requesting it, this opens up a lot of options for you in, in future progress. Because then you won't be stuck with nine.
You could probably put thirty cars in there.
I don't need to.
I understand.
Site plan review.
Yeah, why don't, why don't I have the opportunity first to go with the nine and then we come back next year if it, you know, if I think I need to expand, what?
If you wanna go that way, we'll pull the vote. If you don't like the answer, if you wanna, you want to vote?
Yeah.
Well, I, I'd like to hear what the board, every position is. I mean.
Well.
I mean, you heard?
Do whatever the board wants me to do to try to help this kid out, okay?
We'd love to help.
I hate to have him spend the money for site plan review. We don't have a minor site plan review anymore. I don't remember the last time we had it, what, twenty-five years ago, thirty years ago? So he's gotta have a landscape expert and everything, you know? God knows when I can get back. I mean, Churchill took forever to do this, this plan you've got before you right now. Because he's on a low budget like all of us, trying to help this guy out.
I totally understand and I hate to say no, but you see how the board's going. So what do you like to, what do you wanna do? You wanna close it? We close it and vote?
I don't wanna close it, vote. I, I mean, if, if we're gonna get forced into doing a site plan review, so be it. I'm, I'm, wanna discuss with him.
Think about it?
Until the next meeting and let he and I discuss it and.
Very well.
I, well, there was discussion also about this being, uh, posted as a variance.
If he goes.
Yeah, I, you know, I.
So is that, that, I think that needs to be addressed.
If he wants to go repair, towing comes with repair, but repair is gonna have to go for a site plan. Very, tow, just towing, you're gonna need a variance.
All right. So if we decide to go the site plan review route. What have I gotta do? I've gotta amend my petition, look for my thirty cards that you're suggesting?
You gotta amend your petition and come back with a full-blown plan. I do whatever you want. You want me to?
I, no, I understand. I, I appreciate, I appreciate the fact. I think this board wants to help. And what do you wanna do it within the realm of the, the bylaw?
Well, I have a question of, of, um, both the applicant and our chair. If the, uh, application gets amended. It has to be re-advertised.
I don't have a problem with that. I have no problem with advertising.
Isn't there thirty days?
Did I use Wareham Week on this for a hundred bucks? I mean.
If he goes site plan review, just, he could just, by the time it has to be publicized. Gotta publish it in the paper, but by the time he finishes plan, it's plenty of time.
Well, what I'm saying is, I can't see us continuing for two weeks. There's no way he's gonna be back here in two weeks with what we're saying.
Well, I'd like, I'd like to consider the issues. I'd like to talk with John Churchill about it and see what he's gonna be able to do to help us. Talk to my client.
Yeah, I just, what I'm, what my.
I'd like to report back in two weeks is what I wanna do. I, I won't have a.
You wanna come back in two weeks?
Yeah, I wanna come back in two weeks and tell you what we wanna do, what we'd like to do. Yeah, I wanna come back in two weeks and tell you what we wanna do, what we'd like to do.
Okay, very well, two weeks, very well. Okay.
I make a motion that we continue this for two weeks.
You have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The poll abstained.
I'm sorry, you didn't vote, I should shut up.
We'll see you on the twenty-eighth.
Okay, maybe you did vote, and if I turn him into a mechanic, then he's fine on his towing, it doesn't need a variance.
That's right.
All right.
Thank you.
Just became a mechanic. Thank you, folks.
Thank you very much.
Good night now.
Good night, thank you.
All right, public hearing. Thirty dash twenty-two, the Family Pantry, Damian's Place Corp, site plan review for two four two Marion Road.
Can I have these uh, whatever we had from that last one back for this folder, please? What's it cost for a site plan review to be, this is the guy that can tell me, what's a site plan review cost?
Nine, ten grand? Five, seven?
Here's one right here. Fifteen thousand dollars.
That's a big one, though.
Five thousand square foot building and two point four, two point forty acre wide. For the requirements that are required, that's, that's what. That's what the fee was, that's the charge in.
Let's not go into this publicly.
Oh, we're not, you haven't opened up a hearing yet, you just asked me to jump.
Ask him and then kick him. Do you request the last one at the end of the night all the time? Seems that you always.
I was gonna ask you that during that trial, you're a vampire, so, but I didn't, I figured that wasn't fair.
What's it cost? I didn't know if it's two grand or twenty grand, I just didn't know.
It's not two grand, definitely. There's nothing to grant, you go, you go to your, yeah.
I got my teeth cleaned.
Yeah.
No more two grand, leave.
I need to, um. Need to excuse.
Of course, that's two grand nowadays, remember it used to be three hundred bucks. By the time you've made excavated, do evaluation, do the plan, what? Order, look at what we found it does.
Oh, real estate people are buying it up.
Uh, give, give us a quick break and go to bathroom.
There aren't any.
Yeah, I just went to the bathroom. You gotta read down to the records and stuff.
Why, he handed us all we need to see. I, I have them built in. I guess when it comes to. Site plans and everything, it's the price of doing business, you must know that, right, Nas?
Yeah. A lot of times, I did one time. A site plan in hand, seventy-five thousand dollars, and they got a no. Six months later.
Ooh.
I, in Yama, in Hyannis. Right on, right on twenty-eight, they said no, seventy-five thousand dollars. Burnies, engineers, everything. Sometime, at Rockland, one time also, it's not like Ford, it said no.
That's why ninety percent of your buildings in Wayham, I guess. No, I'm just kidding.
Middleboro, I've done Lakeville, I've done the Bedford. But a lot of times, you go and they say, no. The name of the game.
That makes sense. Yeah.
Yeah.
Minor, I mean, it does.
That's gone, I guess.
Be given a no.
Sorry, well, you start a minor.
It wasn't, it isn't part of the bylaw any longer.
And nobody obeyed to the rules and it goes out of hand. That's the problem.
Think this one's late, can't wait till the twenty-eighth.
What, was it a long one?
We've just shipped all of our clients, all, we just did this whole meet, we're gonna do it all over again on the twenty-eighth, plus whatever else comes in. That's why I wish we could in some kind of a way push him along.
Sorry, I couldn't wait any longer.
It's that huge Gatorade you drank, I saw you.
It was only a little one.
Yeah.
Do we need a folder and everything?
Need it all, I think the whole box is yours.
This is a site plan review, we, we get the, what's in this site plan review?
Jimmy, why don't you give me the orders to read while you pass?
This has to be read in?
Yes. And you could pass this stuff.
Let me take all of this, you take that.
All right, notice of public hearing, the zoning board of appeal will hold. Public hearing on September fourteen, two thousand twenty-two, at six thirty P M in room three twenty of the. Wareham Multi Service Center, forty-eight Marion Road, Wareham, Mass, oh two five seven one. To consider petition number thirty dash twenty-two for a site plan review. From the requirement of Article three, table three twenty, and Article fifteen. Section fifteen twenty of the Wareham zoning bylaws. To the Family Pantry dash Damian's Place Corp. Care of GF Engineering of two, two six six Main Street, Wareham, Mass, proposing to construction fifty by a hundred building. With associate, with associated. Park and law access drives, loading docks, utilities and storm water management system located at two forty-two Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. Accesses map fifty-six, lot one thousand B, in the MR thirty zoning district. And the notice, first notice was August twenty-five, two thousand two. Second notice was September first, two thousand twenty-two. All right, it's yours.
Okay, Bill Madden from GAF Engineering. Here on behalf of Damian's Food Pantry.
Yep.
The petition before you tonight is really twofold, one of them is uh. Site plan review requirements, and the other one is uh under, I think it was three, Article three, section three twenty. Um, a special permit for a neighborhood grocery store in the. In the MR thirty um zoning district.
Yep.
So those are the two things that we're, we're talking about tonight, I think the standard on the um. On the use, special permit, not substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. Um, in that, in that area, if you're, you're all familiar with it, there's a get, the gas station right across um. Swiss Beach Road. Then there's Morgan's Mobile Home Park down Swiss Beach Road a little further, cross the street, crossing Route six.
Morgan's?
I don't know if it's, no, I'm wrong, it's not Morgan's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like the little, okay.
It's a little one, yeah, then across the, across Route six, you have Wareham Country Market, which has been there for a number of years, it's a regular. Convenience store, then we go down um just to the right of that, as you're looking at Domino's Pizza, Brown's Package Store, so there's a. There's a um quite a few, some, well. Retail uses in that, in that general, in that general area.
Front and Route six?
Yes.
It, and it's between Cranberry Cottage and that gas station at the end of Swiss Beach Road?
Correct, yeah.
And it's been for sale forever in the Chamberlain's owner?
That's right.
Okay, I think I know where it is.
And Nick Deekus is very involved with Damian's Food Pantry, I believe he's the, the, the um.
Yep.
The president of it down here in Wareham and uh. As far as I could see by the deed, the, the deed conveyed. Deekus conveyed the property to Damian's Food Pantry. And they're the owners of the land and this is where they're looking to uh, to put it. The existing food pantry is down at Cranberry High with the old Ocean Spray building, you know, Peter Ferry's building down in there. They're gonna move it out of there when this, when this building is constructed and they're currently in a. Fundraising um mode right now to generate the capital necessary to, to build the building. Um, as you can see on this plan, this indicates the, the locus in blue on a USGS grid sheet. This is um on an, on an aerial photograph where it looks. What it looks like, you can see that half round circle on the lot, that's due to the cell tower that's on that lot, that.
Yeah, we granted that, we were.
Yep, yep, you did.
So does, does Damian's? Buy the property already? Or are they subject to this approval?
No, it's purchased.
They own it?
The deed and the application.
Do they own the land that the tower is on and their tenant, the tower is a tenant to them now, or?
No, the tower was on a separate property, um, but I.
Okay.
There's something we can talk about later, I think, on, on that thing. But in any event, the, in any event, it's um. It's two forty-two Marion Road, it's an MR thirty zoning district. Um, the minimum lot area required is thirty thousand square feet, there's a hundred and eight thousand on the lot. Um, frontage is required to be a hundred and, a hundred and fifty feet. We have around, um, I don't know how many we have, we have a lot. Much, much more than that, we're able to meet all of our setbacks. We're proposing um municipal water, there's municipal water out on. Out on um Route six and on Swiss Beach Road, we desire to take it from Swiss Beach Road. Uh, the property has a sewer easement across its frontage, like a twenty foot wide sewer easement. There's a line that runs through there, so. Consequently, we're also looking to tie into uh municipal sewer on Swiss Beach Road, and I'll get to those. Areas on the plan when we, when I, when I flip through the sheets. But uh, that's, that's what the deal is pretty much for, for the utilities, how we're planning to, how we're planning to deal with it. I think that with that sewer easement on. Route six right in the front kind of restricts our ability um. Landscape wise, you know, we're not able to really plant trees in that thing, it is an easement. So we had to do a couple of um. Couple of things with landscaping, we still provide the landscaping that's required by the zoning bylaw. The parking requirement for a building such as this, it's one per three hundred square feet. That would mean we need seventeen spaces, we've provided thirty-three on the site, and I'll explain why we, why we. Uh, providing thirty-three. On the.
So Madden, if I, do you have the commissioner deny, like, deny a recommendation letter? I don't have it on the file.
Did he deny you or he just sent you?
Well, he sent you to here, but do you have that letter somewhere? I can't find it.
No, I don't have a, I don't have a letter from the building commissioner in, in the package.
You just came straight to us before going, without going to him?
We thought I was, I had, I had previous discussions with the prior building commissioner. Yeah, and we talked about how we were gonna go forward with it. He thought initially that it was just allowed by right, but that was not the case, it is a special permit, it is a special permit under, under that, so. You know, we had advanced the entire permit application and put it forward, you know, prior to that, but you know, I think that. Just reading the bylaw, you know, I didn't, I didn't think that I needed him to do that, but.
He is the commissioner, he's the one who enforced zoning.
Dave Riquina?
Well, Mister.
The new, Paul Turner is now.
Turner.
Yeah.
He's the one who directs us what to do.
But he was not, he was not here when we started this, we started with Dave, then, you know, things just.
Okay, we, we. I'll allow to continue it, but. Our respect, I think you should go see him.
I will.
All right.
I'll, I'll take care of that.
Yeah.
Um, so in any event, that's what the uh. What the pride, where the pride, where the project is globally, like from ten thousand feet up. The second sheet in, in those plans set, that indicates basically our general notes, our storm water, our water. Um, erosion control legend, general notes, and the test pit data, we excavated test pits on the site for uh. For our storm water management system, we needed to make sure that we had proper separation between the water table and understanding of the soils.
Did you do fifty-three G yet? Did they do a fifty-three G?
Um, I believe they, I believe they did because we received an estimate from, from Charlie, I had the W nine. I contacted the client, I believe it's all in place, I'd have to double check with Ken.
All right, okay, we haven't heard anything from him yet on that. From Charlie.
Charlie, no, no, not yet.
I'm sure we will, go ahead, continue.
Okay. Um, the sheet three, that's a, that's a site overview plan, that just basically shows us what we're doing here. Here's our frontage on Marion Road, we're about two hundred and twenty feet, our driveway entrance, twenty-four feet wide, Mass Highway. Curb cut is what we're going to, to need there, we're about two hundred and twenty feet away from um Brown Street. About two sixty from Swiss Beach Road, and then. The, the back driveway is about three hundred and fifty feet from, from Route six. So there's a requirement of the zoning that the driveways have, cannot be closer than a hundred and fifty feet. Um, from intersecting streets and what have you, so, you know, we, that's how we cited. The driveway entrance so that we're compliant with, with that.
How far are you from Brown?
Two twenty. To the center line.
I think the requirement's two hundred, but doesn't matter.
It's two twenty, if it's, whatever it is, it's two.
Not one, you said one fifty, but I think it's two hundred, but anyway.
But that was the first thing I checked into when we did it, because there was a member of the planning board. That was questioning the distances between the driveway and the roadway.
Right.
Brown Street, and I knew that we had complied, so that's what I pointed out. Um, we're showing community guidance as a, as a future amenity for the piece, for the property. So the thought is, is that perhaps some of the volunteers, the people that are associated with the food pantry. Might want to establish some, some community guidance over there, wasn't discussed whether or not. Some of that product would be brought inside to the building as fresh produce or whatever, but. They just thought that that was a.
Oh, so that's not parking, that's, those are guiding plots.
Those are raised bed, planting beds just for. Community guidance, so something might see in the city of Boston, you know, or whatever, that's, that's the scale of it. We show chain link, we show a fence around a little driveway access and just twelve feet to drive down, if somebody had a pickup truck and they wanted to. You know, bring their weeding equipment, a cooler for lunch, whatever the case might be. So, so in any event, we come in off of uh. Route six with the twenty-four foot wide driveway. Entrance, we have a parking field in the, in the front of the building, it's landscaped, perimeter landscaped around it, there's some little bit of landscaping up front. Five foot wide sidewalk, ten foot wide covered porch on the front of the building. Um, the door entrance where you can just see there's a couple of swinging doors that we show here, so the entrance is gonna be here. And the circulation inside. The facility is, is something that they handle, and I don't truly understand it, but I think for some people. You know, they can actually place their order, tell them what they want, they prepare a box door and bring it out to the car if you're an elderly person or maybe. Have a, have some impairment that doesn't allow you to carry things, but that's what kind of goes on over here. We show um. Three, well, two handicap parking spaces, that's what we're required to have, we're under fifty spots. Um, on the, uh, let's call it the west side of the building. We show four other parking spaces and there's a double door that's crosshatched in the front of that. And that's just to provide some access inside the building, it's not to drive in, it's not an overhead garage door, it's just a double door. With a, basically, a flush parking stall, so if somebody had a two wheel handcart. You're bringing something into the door, you're able to get into the building. Circling around the back of the building, we increased the width of the driveway going out to Swiss Beach. Um, to thirty feet because we anticipate tractor trailer truck that comes from the Boston Food Pantry once a week. Will enter in off of Marion Road, we can drive down here. Um, on the access drive and then back up to these dock leveler type loading docks at the, at the rear of the building.
Do you have, do you have room for that?
Yes.
And still have exit in case of emergency?
Yes. Yep. We, we, we use like a WB, WB fifty-three, I think is the uh. The vehicle that we use, but that guy would be down in here and it would still provide access through there. Fire department access is on the very last sheet.
Yeah.
We show the access is coming in off of, off of Route six.
Yeah.
Going in the front of the parking lot, circulating in that manner, avoiding that, that loading dock. But that's the plan that we submitted to um.
Did you get the blessing yet?
I haven't received, I haven't received a letter from any town board as of yet.
Okay.
I asked Ken about that today, he had none to provide me.
No.
So, couple of stormwater management systems, we have a sediment four bay and a small drainage basin in the front to take care of this side of the building. We have another one at the, at the rear of the building that's essentially taking the backside. Same general concept, a sediment four bay plus a small, a small drainage basin. But that's the overview plan, and this cutout here indicates where we're gonna be picking up our water in our, in our sewer. Um, the site is a relatively flat site, all wooded as it is um, right now. We show the easement. Sewer department easement, property lines, the area, the location of the test pits that we dug. And some other information uh, with respect to benchmarks and what have you. Ground slopes from this corner down to the, down to the backside of the site, couple of feet of slope. It's a pretty nice site, reasonably level, I think that we're able to. Build a halfway decent building on the site without um. Too many, too many issues, and you can see that's the radius of the adjacent lot, that's equal to the fall down zone. Of the, of the cell tower. This is our layout in utility plan, this shows all the dimensions associated with the driveway, the radiuses and what have you, and the number of parking spaces. The circle in the parking space indicates the number in that, in that small parking field. Um, the sidewalk, the covered porch sidewalk over there, it's. Pretty, I think it's a pretty nice um, layout, in the back, we show six parking spaces, we anticipate those spaces. To probably be the ones that are gonna be used by the people that work there. Right now, they only operate two days a week between eight thirty and eleven thirty AM. So it's a, it's a relatively early morning um, type of business. That they deal down, deal with down there with their customers. They have a food truck that comes from Boston Food Bay once a week and they have their own. Food pantry trucks that go to area supermarkets, I think they have two, they run three to four days a week. And they have somewhere in the order of six to ten people, volunteers that might work in the place on those. Off hours, those off days that they're not open, so. So we show our gas, our water, our sewer, we show a pretty wide trench patch, I mean Dave Riquina likes, not Dave Riquina, but uh, Dave Menard. Likes a wider trench patch, so instead of having individual trench passes, we're going for like a forty foot wide double. Forty foot wide trench patch, I think we show um, flowable fill is what we're gonna use as opposed to gravel in here. This is grading and drain, drainage, where it's such a flat site, we're trying to sheet flow as much of the site as we can. To each one of these sediment four bays, where um. We're just using paved waterways. Off the parking lot into the sediment four bay, then there's an overflow s- stone spillway. That deposits the uh. The runoff into the, into the drainage basin, those are really infiltration basins, so the water after it's pre-treated going through the. Sediment four bay, it'll be um, discharged into the, into the drainage basin and it will infiltrate into the ground. And we designed them both the same, the contributing area here for basin two is a little bigger than for basin one, consequently, it's a little larger. This is the sedimentation erosion control plan, we're required to add these sedimentation erosion control plans on. Sites that will alter more than one acre of land, this is gonna alter one, over one acre of land, so we're, we're required. To prepare a sediment, an erosion control plan to be compliant with that. MS four stormwater management requirement EPA laid on the town, so. This is why we include this plan, so all of our construction equipment is gonna enter and exit. Through this construction entrance on Swift Beach Road, so we'll try to keep most of our construction equipment off of Cranberry, off of. Cranberry Highway or Route six in this case.
Addison Road, yep.
Yeah, Marion Road. Um, so that's what's going on there, we show. Our erosion control on the site, this black line is just the, is the limit of work line, this detail in the corner shows what that. Tracking pad, as it's called, when the truck equipment, when the equipment comes in and out of the site. They, it has to track across that tracking pad so we don't carry a bunch of uh, sediment up the road. The next sheet is the landscaping plan, you can see that we've added some landscaping around the entrances and the throats going into the site. There's some perimeter landscaping at the building, the islands are landscaped. A little bit, and then we have more perimeter landscaping up in here, and a little around where the.
Stamp in those plans.
Ed Fuller stamped those plans, uh, I don't think it's, that copy is not stamped, but.
Yeah.
But Ed Fuller's a landscape architect, uh, does our landscape work. I have a stamp plan, plant list is over here on the left-hand side of the sheet and it gives the size, the quantity description.
Uh, coming in, what's the radius of the curb?
This right here?
Yeah.
Thirty.
Coming in thirty?
Thirty, yep.
Might need fifty for tractor trailer.
Um. Yeah, well.
If you're coming from Marion.
If we're coming from Marion, right.
You're gonna have to go to state, right?
Yes.
I think they're gonna, I think you should do fifty, if you get tractor trailers, you need fifty. Leaving thirty is fine, but coming in.
Well, it's difficult with Mass Highway because they'll tell us what they want it to be.
I think they'll ask for fifty, but anyway.
Well, I don't know, we've. Pardon me?
They're gonna exit on Swift Beach, they're gonna enter.
Yeah, which would be the tractor trailers, right?
Well, we're talking about coming from Marion. You know, they would be on, on this lane and they'd have to turn here, so I think the concern was this right-hand turn, left-hand turn.
Oh.
Once they're open, they're gonna be getting food delivered.
Yeah, alright.
Yeah, okay.
I got it, I, I, I.
You can do what I meant.
Got you.
Um, in the remaining sheets, let's see, where's? Think sheet number twelve is the uh, the one that shows. Sheet number twelve shows the fire department apparatus turning movements, so we show them coming in off of Marion Road. Coming across the front, turning, turning and exiting out and looping in that direction, but I'll make sure that I get a. Well, we'll have to get the letter from the fire chief at some point.
Right.
On that. Um. The building, there's. So there's a rendering of what the building is gonna look at, it is gonna be um, essentially a metal building. Um, but we're trying to add a few features like the awning type covered porch on the front, there'll be some. Don't know if those would be opaque or whether they're gonna be clear panels at that higher level to let some light into the building, I think it's. I think it's gonna be um, pretty good, then it shows the uh, shows the. Shows the light, uh, the windows on the uh, on the side. And on the front, I think it's gonna be a, a half wall of say texture, whether it's masonry or. Simulated masonry or something, and then go back up with the same features of the building.
We're gonna want accurate architectural plans, so we're gonna, so if they're gonna put windows, we're gonna, I wanna see windows after.
Sure, and um.
So whatever they provide, they're gonna do.
No, that's what the goal is, cause we're pricing out the building, you know, to a contractor, so we need to know that.
In other words, if they come back, we don't wanna see a building, I personally don't wanna see a building without the windows after, that you presented us with windows.
Understood.
Or like the masonry in the front, so, you know? So I personally, I would. Exactly.
My back is killing me, just sorry about that.
So make sure you pass the message.
Yeah, I mean, there is an architect involved, uh, Dennis Cook Caldwell is the architect, uh. All the construction has to be conducted under controlled construction, so our plumbers, mechanical, electricians, architects. They all have to sign the affidavits for the work, so.
But we will have an architectural plan eventually, right?
Yes.
Alright, okay.
I mean, I think that um. I don't know, this, this lays out site plan review. That's supposed to be what we're reviewing or we're gonna have?
And architectural. But I think he's supposed to bring it along.
You know, giving us this much so Charlie can start reviewing.
Exactly, this is like the beginning, yeah.
And then. Yeah, I mean, we, we plan on, that's what the plan is, so it's not coming as any surprise to us. Um, as far as that goes, uh. The hours of operation, as it's, as I spoke, are gonna be eight thirty to eleven thirty on Thursdays and Saturdays, they might entertain. Like a Tuesday if demand is such that requires a little bit, a little bit more time. So those are the, those are the days that'll be open to the public. Then, um, on service days, they'll have, like I say, ten, ten, twelve volunteers working. Um. You know, on the site, but only one or three will work on a non-service day, so we're not, if they're not helping people. There's one to three that might be there on, on any day other than the services, which are what, the Tuesday, what did I say, Thursday and Saturday. Um, we show thirty-three parking spaces to handicap, we show no, we show no sight lighting. We have no exterior poles on bases shown, we've shown some conduit for future. But right now, we think that wall pack units on the building. Under canopy lighting at the front porch on the front will provide enough security. For, for that building, and then in the future, if they.
They have nighttime hours, they'll need them. Right now, they're not gonna be open in the dark.
No, I mean, we don't have the winter, uh, we don't have the winter season.
Land requires it.
Pardon me?
Site plan requires perimeter lighting.
On the building.
And the parking lot.
Nah, I don't know about.
See what Charlie says.
Yeah, no, that's fine, you know, I think that what we're just doing is looking at things that. Are cost elements that are fairly expensive, if we didn't have to put them there, we could accommodate the. The, the people at the building with the lighting there, that's what we were intending to do. We did show the underground conduits on the site plan so that wh- where our light bases would be installed, so we know where they would go. But however Charlie reviews it and comes up, it was fine by us. Um, but in any event, we have thirty-three parking spaces and two handicap, which is a little bit more than um. What would be required, it's actually twice as much, but.
Doesn't hurt to have more parking.
Now, and in a situation like this, you might get it in fluxes and, you know.
If I get the right sense of Damian's pantry. They're giving out boxes of food and it's available at nine o'clock on Tuesday, at nine o'clock on Tuesday, forty cars show up.
Exactly.
And nine oh five, forty cars are leaving. And so, and that's it, but you need the parking when the, when you get, get here.
You see them, they park all the way down alongside the railroad track.
Yeah, so they get what they're doing here, and I think when they have more exposure, they're gonna probably have.
More, more traffic.
People coming for a park.
So thirty-three cars, good idea.
Yeah, and that's what we think too, we think that um, it'll probably gain a little momentum when it, once it gets built and. You know, it's probably a little better location to be at for the people that have to go, that are planning on going there than where it is. I haven't been to it, but the description is, doesn't make me run down there to check it out.
Yeah, it's, it's accessible, but it's not um. Yeah, exactly, yeah, that's, that's very, that's. Ten, a hundred times better than what they got right now.
Yeah, I think it'll be, I think it'll work out really well myself, um. As I said before, we don't have to sprinkle the building, so we're just putting in a regular, I think a two-inch water service is what we're gonna put there. Think we show something, some irrigation for the um, for the community garden, if it, if it comes to fruition. Um, sanitary sewers, I talked about, I did talk with Guy Campino, we do understand there's that sewer moratorium. He, you know, he's, he was looking for some flow for us to. To be allocated for, for this building, it's only five hundred gallons a day, it's not a big demand. So we're hopeful, he was on vacation for two weeks and I haven't heard back.
So I have a question, the, the, the gardens, they're not a, they're not a absolute, that could be, you could come back in the future and say. We're gonna pave it and make a parking lot after, they come eighty at a time.
Yeah, yeah, I suppose.
I mean, I'm just, I'm, I know that's a crazy state, but you.
Yeah, I don't think it's gonna, I don't think it would need to be a parking lot based upon the way we, the way we have things right now. You know, drainage would be tough to deal with, there'd be a lot of issues, but. I think the, I think the desire is really to have community gardens, I think it'd be, it might be a nice touch, I, I don't know, I don't, we, we don't have any community gardens anywhere in town, do we?
No.
Chi-Honit Road.
Other than all the medians.
Sat on the right-hand side by the steam bath, by the steam.
That's um. Past the steam bath that we're making.
It's right, right next to the steam bath, like the, the. If you're coming to the steam bath heading from the Cemetery Mount Cemetery, just before, there's a parking lot and then there's trees and then the back, I think there's gardens back there.
Oh, really? Okay, I've never even been behind there, so.
So then, while we're on the garden, so if the, it's only five hundred dollars, uh, five hundred gallons a day, if they're watering, how much would that would? Would increase your waterfall?
Depending what they're grown, but it would increase it.
Wouldn't increase the uh, sewage because that would just be going in the ground, right?
Correct, but it would be metered water, so we'd be paying the sewer rate. So if it's metered water, you pay for the, you, you pay for it through the sewer unless you can document. That that water was used for, uh, that, that water didn't find its way into the sewer system. So if they were to put a little meter out here and meter that flow and deduct it from the others, that, that's one way around that.
It's too bad, it's too bad we couldn't have a catch basin and be green and keep that water and use it for watering.
Right.
Our, our sewer isn't needed now, is it?
No, no, I was talking about the water, I mean, that's how the sewer.
Come in and you pay for it to go out. No, you only pay for it to come in. You, the paying to going out is EDUs, equivalent, you pay a flat rate when you use, I don't have sewers, I have no idea.
Yeah.
You pay a flat rate.
I thought with those, cause.
Yeah, it's EDUs, and you know, I mean, I'm not a big fan of.
Again, that, that five hundred gallons a day is.
Yeah, four bedrooms.
Yeah, right, well, the five hundred is for the facility, not irrigation water, who knows, might put a well in it, right, they could do that as well. Um, not expecting a tremendous amount of traffic there, I think the traffic is gonna be really. You know, it's gonna be heaviest on the workdays, the, the two days a week that it's open. So we weren't anticipating like a hundred vehicle trips, it's not gonna be like a Dunkin' Donuts, it's not gonna be like. Uh, Wareham Country Mark's not gonna be like a package store, we're just gonna very, very benign. Traffic on this site, at least, that's how, that's how we're viewing it.
The way things are going and the price of food, we might all be in that line.
Yeah, exactly. Um, there's no wetlands on the site, there's no surface waters on the site, there's no rare and endangered species on the site. You know, they talked about, you know, we had a little bit of a discussion about wildlife, I mean, I just find that it really just. You know, they're pretty smart, they just relocate to other, relocate to other areas. I mean, we will be altering a good portion of two acres, you know, there is a, there, there are some woodland areas. Um, down Swift Beach Road, there's a couple.
I don't think, I don't think that holds too much for wildlife in that corner.
So if Guy can't find five hundred gallons a day for you, what do you think's stopping you from putting it onsite, Seppic?
Yeah, that's basically a game changer to the, to the project where it probably doesn't go.
Really?
Yeah, yeah.
Why, why, because it would be that expensive?
Yeah, yeah.
He's a six-by-eight cesspool, doesn't cost that much, does it?
I just put a pipe in the catch basin, but.
A six-five gallon drum with some stones in it, you know?
Yeah, if you could do it, I mean, the old school way, I mean, it would, it would work maybe up in Maine somewhere or something, but I don't know, we kinda.
So they got, they need the sewer, they need the.
We do, we do need the sewer and it's, and it's the best um, alternative, you know, we show a drop in.
Yeah, I get that part of it, but. I just.
I think they, I think they find it, I think they work, I think they're working hard to come up with five hundred gallons, I know there's a couple of jobs that we've worked on that. That haven't met the prior demand, so we know there's a few gallons floating around somewhere, but how it gets allocated, I don't know who's in line.
Five hundred gallons, nothing, like I said, it's a four-bedroom house.
Yeah, no, it's not, it's, it's not much at all.
So, okay, I guess, I know I'm tired, I'm sure everybody's tired.
Just a quick question, the dotted line that runs all the way up and it kinda goes in the middle of Route six and then comes all the way back around and I see shaded zone X. Zone X and zone X.
Yeah, those are the flood, those are the flood zone. So we're all in like the one hundred year and the five hundred year flood zone.
No, I was just curious because it's just the way it goes out into the road. And then from the center of Route six to the park and right, there's. Certain number that you're supposed to have.
From the center of Route six.
Just that I've run into it, uh. With another business down there, they made them move all their parking lots because from the center of Route six to your parking area has to be a certain amount. So I. I didn't know if you knew offhand what it was, but I just know that there's a guy that's in that neighborhood. Somehow he works for the state and he has cahoots with the state and boy, they come down in a heartbeat when he calls. So I just. Just to let you know over and.
What's the setback there? Twenty or thirty?
The front yard setback?
I'm, I'm just looking at the parking.
Twenty.
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 So I'm just, just curious because that guy, just from my knowledge, he. He called me down. They came out. They measured from the center of Route six and said, all the parking lots have to move. So I just didn't know. I didn't want you, I mean, I thought maybe you might know offhand.
Well, I think that you, you, maybe some of the things you could be referring to is like you see some parking lots that are in, actually in layout of Route six. Um, in the layout of Marion Road. And that's when a guy might measure from the center line and pull his tape. So you gotta move these cars back. I mean, ours is designed the way it is, so you know, I think that we're.
You know, like Cranberry Cottage?
Yeah, that's.
The parking are on the, on highway layout.
Yeah.
Not anymore.
Oh, is that the guy?
Well, I mean, I was gonna say that.
Put it this way, I know the guy that moved all of it, so.
Oh, there you go.
And there's another one down at Marion on Route six that, that, you know, they've been parking in the layout there forever. That's gonna come to a screech. I'm not working on that job. I just know a little about it. Our parking lot is.
Station along the way there that's not doing it.
Our parking lot is eighteen feet from the layout line, so we.
Eighteen feet.
Beyond the layout back, right? So they can't be saying move those.
You need twenty.
A frontage for the building, not for the parking lot.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll see what Charlie says. I'm tired. So this is the deal.
We throw it on Charlie and say we're tired.
I, I, if so, um, everybody stop me if they want to. So fifty-three G account, make sure Charlie's comment, fire department. Sewer, I'm sure you find sewer, landscaping, architect, you got a stamp, uh, architecture plans.
Yep.
And what else? Thing with me, guys?
You said the lighting.
Lighting. Well, we'll see. We'll hear from Charlie.
Lighting is a good question.
And also I recommend, don't restrict yourself with the operation hours. Make it eight to five.
Because they could get bit.
Well, I think we'll, I think we'll.
Super busy.
I think we'll ask for that, but we just wanted to tell you that this is how the.
Right, but then you have to come back for modification. Just, just do regular hours. If you want, if they want.
No, that's a good point.
Yeah, I, I mean, this way you don't have to come back.
Little bit of aggravation.
Right.
And us some.
You taking this home?
No, all yours.
Elastics for these?
Uh, what else? Anything you wanna add, Troy? Rich?
Yep.
For them to come back. I think social, I think myself. Okay, you wanna add anything for them to bring next time?
Damian's pantry comes a long way if they get that.
Jimmy, you wanna add something before we send them away?
I make a motion to continue.
Okay, we have a motion to continue. Do I have a second?
Second.
Yep.
Second, by throwing all in favor, say aye until the twenty-eight. Aye.
Aye.
Oppose abstain, yeah. Next hearing on the twenty-eight. Uh, try to push everybody. Maybe you could wrap it up next time.
Yeah, I'll, I'll push it. If it doesn't look like the push is working, I'll just bump it out, tell you in advance so we.
Yeah, yeah, just.
What, what else were you saying? Uh, you, you rattled.
Architecture plans.
Yeah, got it.
Uh, Charlie's comments. I'm sure he'll come back with the comments fairly soon. Hours of operation, uh. Landscape and ar- lighting, like I said, Charlie, what else sewer, I'm sure Guy would find five hundred gallons. For a good cause.
Then the review where you said something about the driveway entrance.
And uh, the commissioner, I'd like you to visit the commissioner.
You, you don't take, are you taking?
Just make sure this is what we, because keep in mind, uh. If we grant you a permit and he finds out, he doesn't have to give you a building permit.
I'm sorry?
Jimmy, if, if he. If the relief you're asking for. And you go see him after we grant you and he comes up with something else, he doesn't have to give you a permit. So just go see him, make sure you're on the same page.
Yeah, get off in the proper, even key.
Right. If he, if you need the relief from the different article, he's gonna, you're gonna have to include it. So he doesn't turn you down after you do all that work.
Okay.
Alright. Very well. Anything else, you guys, before we adjourn?
Well, I heard a second. I didn't.
They're promoting to close.
I thought we seconded.
And then a second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, aye.
Aye, oppose abstain.
What we didn't do, I don't think.
Yeah.
I thought we were done.
Thank you, Bob.